Okay, my computer says seven o'clock, so I will call to order this regular meeting of Ferguson Township Board of Supervisors for June 1st, 2020. Ask Dave to start with the meeting information.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you to everybody who's joining us this evening for the June 1st regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors. This meeting has been properly advertised in accordance with the Pennsylvania Sunshine Act as a virtual. It's okay, conducted using the Zoom telemeeting platform. Excuse me, if you are joining tonight as a member of the public or as an agent to speak on behalf of an agenda item, I ask that you please enter your name, municipality of residence, and if applicable, the topic you wish to speak on by using the chat located somewhere beneath the word bubble below your screen. Excuse me, in addition to the Zoom virtual meeting space, the township's teleconference line may be accessed by calling the township's mainline at 814-238-4651 and dialing extension 3799-3799 when prompted. Prior to commencing the meeting, I have a few short logistical items to cover. First, the public may interact with the board by unmuting their microphones when acknowledged by the chairman. As though when you're not speaking, everybody, please keep their microphones on mute to reduce the ambient background noise. Please refrain from using the chat feature to ask questions or offer comments since nobody will be monitoring the chat and your comment or question may be missed. Secondly, board members are asked to indicate their name when a motion is being made or being seconded so that the minutes can accurately reflect the action taken. And finally, I will conduct a roll call the Board of Supervisors to ensure that all members can hear and interact using the Zoom meeting. Please indicate that you're here when your name is called. Mr. Miller?
Here.
Ms. Ninni?
Here.
Mr. Mitra? Oh, Mr. Mitra is not with us. I did not admit. Oh, here he is speaking up. I'll come back to him. Ms. Strickland?
Here.
Ms. Stevens?
Here.
And Mr. Mitra, if you could just indicate that you can hear us, you're the last. Okay, Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum. I'll turn it back to you. Thank you.
Thank you. Before we start, I need to enter for the record that we had an executive session at five o'clock this afternoon on a matter of litigation. I've also had a request from the Senate that we had a proclamation similar to the one that was made by COG and so at least one other municipality regarding bias. That we add that to the consent agenda for a consideration at the next meeting. So if no one has any objection, I will add that to the consent agenda by unanimous consent. Hearing no objection, we'll make that change to tonight's agenda. Next is citizens' input. If there's anyone who cares to address the board on any matter that's not on the agenda, please let us know at this point. I see none. I will go to the approval of minutes for the May 18th, 2020 meeting.
Motion to approve. Laura.
Present yet second.
Have a motion a second. Are there any discussion changes or questions? I see none. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
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 opposed? Who carries? Our next item is special reports, beginning with the report from the manager on the COVID-19 response.
Thank you again. I'll start by saying that the biggest development occurring since my last report has been that the transition of Center County to the green face has begun under the governor's plan to reopen the Commonwealth. As many of you know, this is restrictions on social and recreational gatherings as well as businesses and hospitality and retail establishments, but imposes new guidance on their operations designed to ensure the safety of patrons and workers. Under the new phase, for example, restaurants and bars are permitted to offer both indoor and outdoor seating space, provided that a physical distance of six feet or more between customers can be maintained and no more than four customers that have a common relationship may sit together at a bar. Other personal care services such as hair salons and barber shops may reopen by appointment only. Large group events of greater than 250 individuals remain prohibited. The entirety of the governor's order on green phase restrictions can be read by clicking on the coronavirus link at pa.gov. As you know, municipal operations have resumed entirely with employees working revised shifts and partly remote assignments where able. At our weekly meeting this morning, the crisis management team recommended that the office building remain closed to public access for the time being. I concur with that recommendation and intend to leave the office closed to the public, but will reevaluate that on June 15th. I will also be discussing with Chief Albright the possibility of opening the police department to public foot traffic before before June 15th, provided it can be safely accommodated. And in the meantime, visitors can reach the police department using the phone in the vestibule entrance. Pert Luana Oliver, Executive Director of the Center Area Transportation Authority, CADA, will resume a reduced level of service for certain routes beginning on June 8th. The RP and NV routes will be removed and in their place, the NR and V routes will return to 40-minute intervals at 40-minute. This will also return frequency to HM and W routes. CADA will now extend weekday service at these frequencies to its normal end of service times in the evening for what it operates through summer reduced service. However, CADA's service day will continue to start at 6:00 a.m. CADA will be operating the above routes on Saturday, but for now it will not be operating on Sunday while the authority determines if Sunday is needed and how much ridership returns on the service already listed. Due to the fact that in the green phase, companies are being asked to continue with telecommuting for office workers, CADA is not yet reinstating the commuter routes A, B, C, F, G, and S, but is asking riders to contact them if they are unable to get to work so they can determine whether changes in the level of service are warranted. For the time being, fares have not yet been reinstituted and the number of passengers on each bus continues to be limited. More information will be provided on the CADA's and township's websites as it becomes available. Two more short items in closing. First, I recognize that there's a desire on the part of the community to open public playgrounds. That discussion will take place this week with the municipal managers and the center region council of governments and the center region parks and recreation department. A decision will be communicated from CRPR and through other media outlets in the coming days. Second, the Ferguson Township Municipal Building will be open for the primary election tomorrow. Additional protocol will be in place to provide a safe environment for voters and poll workers. Voters are asked to follow the posted signage and directional tape at the main meeting room entrance for direction on how to proceed through the polling station. If voters are able to wear a mask while voting, I would encourage them to do so. I'll end my report by expressing the appreciation on behalf of myself and my staff for the patience and understanding exhibited by our community through this difficult time. I'll be happy to respond to any questions from the board or those attending from home. Thank you.
Anyone have any questions today?
Thank you. Thanks, Dave, for that really informative report. I have a question about masking in restaurants. So it was my understanding I had attended a webinar, Zoom web, no, a Zoom meeting about restaurants in the green phase. And when I, when I left that webinar, I came out thinking that masks are required inside of restaurants unless you're sitting at a table and eating. But then I've been getting some feedback from residents in the county that there are some restaurants that are posting signs that say you don't have to wear a mask. So I feel like this is conflicting information and I don't have the right information and I wondered if you do.
I will look to Chief Albright to add anything that he might be able to, but in reading some of the guidance today, there wasn't any clarification that I came across relative to the requirement to wear masks in a restaurant when entering. It seems like there's some restrictions that are in place about social distancing and the limitation on the number of individuals that can be seated together. But I didn't see anything specific that required individuals to wear masks when they enter a restaurant. Chief, do you have any other take on that since you've been close to some of those restrictions?
And that's what I'm, and that's what I'm trying to look up right now. I know I spoke to one of the managers at one of the local bars and I know the LCB is telling them that customers have to wear masks in the bars, but when they're eating, they can take them off. I'm quickly trying to look through some guidance on the state website and I can't find anything quick.
So sorry. We'll take a look and see if we can find an answer and then share it out with the board and see if we can provide clarification on the webpage.
I would appreciate that because I think that if that is the rule, it's a little bit complicated and people might have a hard time understanding it. And so it might be a rule that we should focus on helping people understand. And additionally, I understood that if businesses weren't compliant with that, they risked losing various state licenses. And that would be a really major risk that they would be taking. And I would want to make sure that they knew that that was the risk that they were taking if that's actually the risk. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, so I guess Dave and Chief Albright will look into that.
Thank you.
By email or something. Okay. Next item on the agenda is the report disclosed under Region Library. We have Louis Steinberg here for that report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good evening, ladies and gentlemen. For those of you who don't know me, I am Louis Steinberg. I have had the pleasure of serving on the school Board of Trustees for this being my sixth and unfortunately final year. I serve as treasurer of the library board and I'm also vice president of the county Library Federation. So what I'd like to do tonight is start with the status of reopening for the library. Starting on May 18th, when we transitioned into the yellow phase, the library started to take, get back and receive items that had been out at, as of the time that the library shut down. There were over 30,000 different items that had been checked out and had not been returned because of the closing. So as I said, we started accepting these back as of May 18th. Books and other items that have been returned and can continue to be returned at the book slot at the library as well as remote book drops, including the two in our township, one at the Giant and one at the Clearfield Bank in Ferguson, near Pine Grove Mills. But it's not a simple process in receiving these because each item that is checked in needs to be inspected. It's quarantined, it's cleaned if necessary, and then show, needs to be shelved. And given that the library is trying to do everything correctly in terms of social distancing for its staff and everything, it's taking a long, a long time to do this. The next step will be beginning on June 8th, the library will start to distribute books and items, but it'll be a contactless pickup situation where the people who have reserved items online will be able to come to the library, but not into the library. They'll be able to go into the parking lot, text the library indicating that they are there and a staff person will bring the item to the person in the light, in the parking lot. As an aside, with regard to the use of the parking lot, I think it's important for the community to know that the library parking lot has been a Wi-Fi hotspot throughout this entire period of shutdown. And many people have been taking advantage of that opportunity to, to be able to connect as necessary. So the library will be starting to open for 38 hours a week, again, as of the 8th of June. And this is compared to its normal 65 hours a week. And it'll be open on Mondays through Saturday. It won't be open on Sunday. I want to note that the guidelines for the library and what it can do and what, and how it should proceed come from the State Office of Commonwealth Libraries, which in the case of the library takes priority over the color designation, the fact that they're green, yellow, whatever it may be. And so that is the status of the reopening. I think it's probably obvious that as a result of the closing, online resources have been used very heavily. As an example, eBooks were checked at a rate of twice as much in April of 20 as of April of 19. Now with regard to the finance situation, which is obviously a critical concern at this point, as of April 30th, the last information I have, the revenue to date was at 31% of the annual budget and the expenses to date were at 32% of the annual budget. We've had a break in the sense that fortunately, the entire amount of the state budget for the 2019, 2020 budget came in in January. And who knows what would have happened if it hadn't. And I just learned today from Kathy Alloway that on last Friday, I guess a budget was passed, a five-month budget was passed by the legislature and passed by the governor, which was basically a flat budget. So that for the next five months, everything will be the same and the library will get five-twelves of what it would normally get for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year. And who knows what will happen when the legislature discusses the remaining seven months and what impact this situation may have on that. Also, of course, we are sensitive to what the county's situation will be and what how it may affect its contribution to the, both the Center County Library and our library. So obviously Kathy and her staff are working very carefully and very concerned about trying to save wherever they could. And, and because of this concern and in anticipation of revenue shortfall, all employees are being asked, or not being asked, are taking a two-week rolling furlough wherein they will not get their salary, but they will maintain their benefits during that two-week period. It's anticipated that by doing this, the library will save approximately $50,000. Now, under the category of good news, 2020 was a record year for the library through Senator Gibbs. 723 individual gifts were received. Last year, the number was 512 and 512 was the record as of that day. So you can see over 200 more individual gifts were received this year. As far as dollars, $64,400 was received. And as compared to 59,600 in 2019, so basically $10,000 more. And that's without the additional stretch from the Senator Gibbs. So I think what this shows is how important the library is to the members of our community as reflected by their support of it. Another matter with regard to finances, the library will be applying for a forgivable loan through the payroll protection program. This is a program that's part of that $2 trillion Care Act, which was approved by the legislature, the Congress and signed by the president. And from it, the library could receive between 80 and $120,000, which could be used, well, which the library would use entirely for payroll coverage. And as long as it uses in that way, although it's referred to as a loan, it would be 100% forgivable. It needs to be spent during, well, today it would need to be spent for, within eight weeks after the loan was distributed. There's pending legislation in Congress to extend that to 24 weeks, but that really is not of relevance to the library because the closed budget for wages for eight weeks would be over $260,000. So it would very easily be able to use the entire amount to offset some of the wages. And the only condition basically is that during the time that this money is being used, staffing and payroll levels must be maintained as, as before the shutdown. The process for this loan is that, well, initially Kathy Alloway and Jim Biggion have been working on it and working to prepare the documents. The school Board of Trustees Finance Committee has a presentation was made to it and we recommend to the Board of Trustees the approval of it. I'm confident that at our meeting on June 10th, the Board of Trustees will approve it. Then the next day it will be going to the, for a recommendation from the COG Finance Committee. And assuming that the COG Finance Committee approves it, approves making the recommendation to the general forum, the application would be filed. Timing is of the essence because there's a finite amount. And obviously, once it's gone, it's gone. So although the general forum won't consider it until June 22nd, the intent is to file the application after at June 11th. But there's really no risk because if for any reason, and I don't know what it would be, the general forum did not approve the application. There's a 10-day period after receiving confirmation of acceptance that you can choose to reject the loan. And so therefore, within that window, if there were any problem and we received it, we could reject it and there'd be no, no harm. There really is no risk, in my opinion. One could say that there's a theoretical risk because if for some reason the library didn't use the money as it was needed to be used. And if in fact, there was some kind of accounting problem, that could require repayment at 1% over a couple of years. But I have no doubt that given Kathy and given Jim's vigilance, it will be used as required. And so it would simply be 100% forgiven. So that is my report. I'd be happy to answer any questions that anyone might have with regard to my report and any other questions that you may have with regard to the library status. And if I can't answer them, I will obviously get the answer and get it to Dave.
Thanks, Lou. Does anyone have any questions, Mr. Steinberg?
No, but I wanted to say thank you. And I think in every report you give, you teach me something. And I guess I didn't realize that the Library Board of Trustees had a finance committee and I guess you're, you're on it.
Well, as the treasurer, I actually chair of that committee.
There you go. Well, thank you for your service and thanks for always.
Well, it's been a, it's been a pleasure. I really appreciate the fact that Ferguson Township appointed me. I'll have one more report for you and unfortunately that will be, be it for me.
Well, thank you very much.
Anything else?
I just wanted to say thanks for the report and I've heard from a lot of people and I know here in my house, we're all really happy that materials will be accessible again and we're looking forward to that.
That's good to hear and, and we appreciate the patience and the understanding of the community. I mean, there are people saying, well, why can't we just start walking in? You know, we can go into Wegmans. Why can't we come into the library? And it's not quite the same because first of all, the, the, it's hard to keep social distancing in the stacks. It's people are touching books and they're, and everything is to be loaned as opposed to be purchased. So we appreciate the understanding and clearly the library will open as soon as it is feasible to do so, open more so. But as I said, that anybody can go online to find if they, what they are looking for, reserve it and coordinate with the library to pick it up.
That's great. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Anything else? Well, thank you, Lou.
Thank you, Steve.
And next time is under unfinished business, a public hearing, a conditional use application, Aspen Whitehall Partners LLC, Aspen Route 26 Partners, the Orchard View subdivision.
I think I'll ask Jenna to introduce this in just a moment, but before I do, I just want to note that this evening with us, we have Justin Mandell, the applicant, Aspen Whitehall Partners, and as well as Mark Toretti of Pantera Engineering, representing the property owner of Orchard View Subdivision. Jenna?
On April 27th, Pantera Engineering submitted the conditional use application for Orchard View subdivision plan at the corner of West College Avenue and West Whitehall Road on behalf of their client, Aspen Whitehall Partners. The Orchard View subdivision plan consists of 37 lots, 36 of those lots are single-family lots and one lot is a dedicated stormwater basin. So that is Lot 37 and it is designed to be a flag lot. So Zonient Orange requires that all lots have appropriate street frontage determined by the zoning district. Orchard View is zoned, single-family residential, and they are required to have a lot width that street line of 50 feet. The applicants are proposing a lot width for this lot to be 20 feet as shown on the submitted plan. The Zonient Orange does permit the Board of Supervisors to approve a lot width of less than the required minimum width as a flag lot. The memorandum included in the agenda from the zoning administrator dated May 6th lists the four conditions that the Board of Supervisors should consider when reviewing a conditional use application. Plan Commission reviewed this application at their May 11th meeting and they recommended approval to the board pending the conditions listed in the Planning and Zoning Director's memorandum dated May 12th, 2020. And a copy of the memorandums and the application are all included in the agenda.
Okay, thank you. Did either Justin or Mark have anything they want to add or?
This is Mark Toretti from Pantera Engineering. Most of what was discussed last meeting, I think should go over that, but be here to answer any questions if anybody has any other additional questions. Jenna had mentioned the criteria for granting a flag lot. There were four conditions and in our application, we showed where we either met those conditions or those conditions warrant applicable to this situation. Because most times they dealt with residential lots and under those conditions there. So from that end of it, I'll just be quiet here, but if you have any questions, I can respond to them.
This is also, this is a public hearing. So if anyone else cares to address the board on the matter of this motion, please let us know. Not hearing any indication of that, we'll take a motion.
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors approved the conditional use application submitted by Aspen Whitehall Partners LLC and Aspen Route 26 Partners LLC for the Orchard View subdivision, subject to the conditions described in the Planning and Zoning Director Memorandum dated May 12th, 2020.
Second, present yet.
Okay, motion a second. Is there any discussion on this motion?
Yeah, I, I have a question. So and I'm sorry if we discussed this and I've forgotten. I took some notes, but I don't see the answer. So you know, we are making, so what is the impact of this reducing? So essentially I'm trying to understand why is the 50-foot there? reducing? So essentially, I'm trying to understand why is the fifty-foot there and what happens if we reduced it? I think the 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 from fifty to twenty.
Yes, yeah, this is Mark Turetti again from Pantera. Typically, what the flag lots are about are more, say, when you have a residential use and where you want to have at the street frontage, say, a fifty-foot frontage along the lot minimum that can then be widened but enough to ultimately fit a dwelling on or a house on. In this case, this isn't really for residential use. And all that the there's a twenty-foot width that is pretty much going to be where access will be provided in that we call it the flag pole, coming from the street, that one narrow strip to the stormwater basin and that we worked out with the township engineer on that twenty twenty-foot. And on keeping it clear, we have some fencing along the fronts and back and some shrubbery so that people living in the adjacent lots don't, you know, know that it's not their property and they don't encroach on it so that that twenty-foot area can remain open for access for maintenance to the to the basin. So that that's really what this is compared to a residential use where you can see, you know, you typically want to have minimum frontage along the fronts of the lots.
Essentially, a large lot like this in a residential neighborhood, if it can be subdivided into more lots where houses could be located on, we want to make sure that that pole width is wide enough to get a road in. And since it's dedicated stormwater basin, that's not a concern.
Right. And in a in a stormwater basin, pardon my ignorance, but there is there is no condition under which some car or truck or something would need access to that or or, you know, and we would never need to do anything there under normal.
And that's why it's twenty feet. You still get a major truck in there. Originally, they had the easement going out onto Whitehall. And I know Ron Dybert, township engineer, he worked very hard with Pantera to try and get access on the private drive going through the development and having that dedicated, as Mark described, fences, delineating that access point. Then we don't have to worry about neighboring property owners planting gardens in that area. They know that that's not their property.
And there are questions or comments? Hearing none. Dave, does this need to be roll call vote or is this? You're on mute.
Sorry, thank you. Yeah, roll call, please.
Steve, I'm sorry. I I was late on the draw there. I actually have a comment slash question.
Okay, good. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. I guess I was looking at the application and it it states that I think under the question of would this alter the character of the neighborhood? It states that that this basin would be required no matter what, I think it says. I'm sorry, I'm not great at flipping screens here. Let me see if I can get that. Sailing to get it up. Anyway, I guess I would say you could theoretically design the neighborhood in a different way and I'm just I'm kind of going back to this because I think maybe I would have made this comment on the entire Orchard View subdivision had this been sort of presented at the same time. And so I feel like I'm still a little bit behind in all of that, but I guess I'll say I would I would take issue with that answer because I think that there would be another way that you could design the stormwater facilities to serve this development from the sheets to this this lot. And so I'm probably going to vote no, and I probably would have voted no on the whole subdivision because of how disappointed I am in this just like massive stormwater facility that says it's required. And I get I get there are numbers you have to meet, but you don't have to do this exact design. So I guess I'm disappointed in that. I'm disappointed that this is where all those trees were, that there was a lot of discussion about utilizing for stormwater. So had this all been presented at once, I think I would have just I would have just voted no for the larger, the larger reason and not about a driveway width. But I wanted to clarify one point just for everybody's knowledge. We did go over this the last time and we talked about this. I just want to make sure this lot is not included in the calculation of lots developed when we're talking about installing the sidewalk on the other lot by Route twenty-six that requires fifty percent lots developed in this neighborhood before that's installed by the developer. This basin lot is not included in that calculation anyway, correct?
To tell you the truth, I'm not I'm not sure of that.
Well, I think we should make sure of that because, you know, the assumption was people occupying those lots. And had we seen and of course we saw, but had our attentions been drawn to how this lot was different because it's never going to have a house on it, I think we would have made sure to note that before we pass that plan. So I just want to.
Can be noted in this conditional use.
Yes. And and also how awesome addressing that is I've added a note on the plan that that little twenty-foot section of lot will be constructed when either the adjacent lot eleven or lot twelve is built upon.
You misunderstand me. You misunderstand me. Let me let me rewind. When we passed, not this, not this, when we passed Orchard View subdivision minus this conditional use. We discussed how the lot that's adjacent to the sheets fronting Route twenty-six, you guys aren't going to have to install a sidewalk there until you develop fifty percent of the lots within this Orchard View subdivision.
Yes. Oh, yeah. And I see what you're saying is.
Yeah. So you're never going to develop on it. So I don't want to wait for a house on this lot. Get that sidewalk. So I'm just making sure of that.
Okay, yeah, I understand.
Dodging all the eyes.
Yeah, that makes sense.
Thanks.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, hearing none, I will ask Dave to do a roll call vote.
Ms. Stevens?
Yes.
Ms. Strickland?
Yes.
Ms. Ninni?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Yes.
Mr. Mitra?
Yes.
Okay, motion carries. So the next item on the agenda.
Thank you.
Pine Grove or somebody had something to add or? Okay. Appointments, the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Board.
Thank you. So the board may recall that on March sixteenth, an ordinance was enacted to establish a Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Committee. This committee would consist of five members serving four-year staggered terms and would be advisory to the township manager and the board of supervisors on matters pertaining to the implementation of the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan. The township did receive five total applications for membership on the committee and those have been included with your agenda this evening. The board policy on appointments to authorities, boards and commissions, which has also been included with the agenda, provides that the next step would be for the board to typically schedule a work session to interview applicants. However, that part of the process can be waived by unanimous vote this evening. Given that there are five applicants for five vacancies, staff is recommending that the board forego the interview process and make the appointments tonight. Provided with the agenda is a memorandum myself describing the recommended appointments and terms. However, I did note a one inaccuracy in it. The memo is dated May twenty-seventh and the recommended motion in the packet says June first. So if you could just reference the May twenty-seventh memo instead of the June first memo in your motion, that should take care of that. Thank you.
Okay, so to start with, I think I would take a motion to waive the interviews. We have five applicants. My reading of the applications and my understanding of everyone having been involved in the process liking this particular group, I would ask that the board make a motion to waive the interview process for this appointment.
I Laura make a motion that the board waive the interview process for this appointment.
Second, Patty.
You have a motion in a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, that motion carries. Okay, the five applicants that we received were Matt Heller, Jordan Robb, Liz Grove, Shannon Holliday and Reverend Paul Pumpkill. So if anyone would like to make a motion to make those five appointments.
And I Laura moves that the Board of Supervisors appoint the applicants to the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Board in accordance with the terms recommended in the Township Manager memorandum dated May twenty-seventh, twenty twenty.
Eighty June first.
Okay, a motion second. Is there any discussion?
Thank you, applicants.
Yeah, I have a question. So one of the applicants was from Ward Three, so there is no, is there a residency requirement?
Not by ward in the ordinance that was enacted. They do need to be Ferguson Township residents to serve on the, but not specific to the ward.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Well, opposed? Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is a plastic bag ordinance continued discussion. I will say that we will, I'm going to pull this item from the agenda. And Dave, this is the the discussion was to send a letter to our representatives in the governor's office concerning ordinances restricting municipalities from enacting plastic bag ordinances. And I'll ask Dave to address what happened on that.
Thank you. Well, it would appear that there was some activity relative to the legislation that was being, you know, considered by some of the members of the General Assembly that would extend the state preemption on enacting regulations relative to single-use plastic bags and other kinds of material. Pennsylvania Act thirty-two was signed into law by Governor Wolf on on May twenty-ninth. So just this past Friday, excuse me, Act twenty-three is its official number. And that is the identical language as was presented in House Bill ten eighty-three, which includes the following in its brief. So I'll just I'll just read it quickly. Says state of emergency, the General Assembly or a local governmental body or agency may not enact or enforce a law, rule, regulation or ordinance imposing a tax on or relating to the use, disposition, sale, prohibition or restriction of single-use plastics, auxiliary containers, wrappings or polystyrene containers until July first, twenty twenty-one or six months after the order issued by the governor on March sixth, twenty twenty, et cetera, et cetera, and any renewal of the state disaster emergency, whichever is later. So it would appear that that moratorium on local ordinances was extended beyond July first, twenty twenty to July first of next year or six months after the expiration of the governor's disaster declaration. Whichever is later.
So because that has already been enacted by the state legislature and signed by the governor, I see no real point for us writing a letter at this point. However, if anyone cares to discuss or comment on it, feel free. We won't be taking any action at this point.
Well, I have a question for clarification. Wasn't wasn't the effort to really establish preemption for good at the state level on this issue?
I feel several different efforts going on at one time.
I think that's correct. The link that's provided in the agenda narrative is from a representative Hershey from southeastern Pennsylvania. And in the memorandum, it describes proposed legislation that would extend that moratorium indefinitely. However, Representative Hershey was not a sponsor of the bill that House Bill ten eighty-three that was ultimately signed into law by Governor Wolf. In fact, that bill is kind of an omnibus bill that includes several provisions related to state expenditures and then tucked inside the bill is that paragraph that I just read.
Cute. Okay, I guess for the record, I'd be interested in writing a letter at the appropriate time opposing state preemption. Okay, to do. So I don't know if now is the right time, but.
Hey, if you could check and see the status of that bill, I suspect that that bill is going to be set aside for a year with this, yeah, with this having been passed. But if that's still active, maybe we should revisit this.
Okay, great. I'll check it.
Probably drop that that one for right now with the next year having been covered, but we can certainly follow up if they haven't.
Sounds good.
Yes, I could check with the Pennsylvania Municipal League to see if they could follow up with either Representative Hershey's office or any other legislators that may have proposed similar legislation to see if they could determine whether they still plan to move forward with those with those bills.
Oh, that's actually giving me a thought. Doesn't PML sometimes oppose state preemption of things?
Yes, Pennsylvania Municipal League typically will. I I don't know what their position was if they took a position on this specific House bill. But typically, at least historically anyway, they have opposed legislation that has taken regulatory authority away from local governments where it would typically otherwise be permitted.
So maybe if there is a focus just on that in something instead of this mishmash writer tag-in, tag-along kind of thing, maybe they would be interested in opposing that again down the road if that bill were to come up.
Sure, I could check that too.
Yeah, I think typically that would be something that PML would oppose.
So the so the last, the preemption bill was passed in May two thousand nineteen for a year.
Right.
So right now there that has expired.
No, the the initial legislation that was sort of attached as a rider to the twenty-twenty budget included a moratorium in effect through July first, twenty twenty, pending, and there was some additional language in that. A an analysis being completed by, I guess, an ad hoc committee that was going to be convened, the legislator to determine what, if any, the impacts would be on local economies if these restrictions were put into place. I've been in some contact with Senator Corman's office, you know, infrequently throughout the last year, but I've not heard any recent updates on whether that group had actually been convened or what the status or whether they. Uh, I've not heard any recent updates on whether that group had actually been convened or what the status or whether they had drawn any conclusions. Uh, you know, from their report.
Could we, could we ask, could we ask their office, could we ask Corman to give us a report on, like, an update on his progress on that?
Um, we can certainly try. I, I would say at this point, um, you know, that, that prohibition, because given that this new language does not include that requirement. Would probably be in effect regardless, but I can see I could reach out to um some of my contacts over at Senator Corman's office and see if there's been any. And um, you know, with that, with that committee.
That'd be great, because theoretically it was going to be over in, what, like, a month from now, so he wouldn't have been like sure. That it was going to be re-upped, so he probably would have wanted to be working on that or having that committee work on that. It would probably be like ninety-nine point nine percent done by now, so maybe we could ask him for it.
Was zero percent done, on the assumption that what actually passed would pass. I'm a little cynical on this one.
We could give them a chance to respond.
Okay. Okay, uh, nothing else on that, we move on to new business. We have the consent agenda, which uh consists of acceptance of the twenty twenty Treasuries Report. Acceptance of the voucher report, April twenty twenty. Board member request for procurement policy amendment and the board member request for a proclamation on bias. Uh, does anyone want to pull any of those items off the consent agenda?
Yeah. Oh, me.
Could we, I didn't understand, what are we adding to the consent agenda? A statement on bias?
It is adding to the neck, a, a statement on bias that is similar to one passed by CAG by the executive committee. And it, the consent agenda is just placing that on the agenda for the next meeting.
Okay, I'll, thank you.
Okay, so is there a motion to uh adopt or pass the consent agenda? With the uh one board member request pulled off to separate agenda item.
Yeah, I moved that we pass the consent agenda with uh item C. And uh, the procurement policy amendment pulled out uh and A and B and. The newly added anti-bias one in.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion from Senator, second from Lisa. Any, or no, there is no session on consent agenda, all in favor. Aye.
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 Motion carries. Next is a zoning appeal, uh, under zoning appeals and request variance, uh, two fifty Banyan Drive.
Thank you, I'd like to uh try to share my screen again, just to orient the board and where we're at here. Okay. So, um, provided with the agenda is a copy of the application seeking a variance for property located at two fifty Banyan Drive. Submitted by Mr. Nielsen, uh, who resides at that address. The applicant is seeking relief from setback requirements that are applicable to the zoning district to. Uh, permit the installation of a paved basketball court within the setback area, so just to, if you can all see my screen here, this is East Pine Grove Road. You have um at um Naked Egg Cafe. Making hungry for breakfast food is down there, and then this is Banyan Drive, it proceeds into the Westfield subdivision. And um, this is the property in question, two fifty. West Banyan Drive, so, um, and then if you proceed further east, you get into Hillside Farm Estates, Lowest Lane, and ultimately Nixon Road. Um, typically, the board takes positions of neutrality on zoning variance requests, which is what staff is recommending in this case. Um, in the past, if there's been variance requests that the board has felt strongly about, um, either opposing or supporting. Uh, they have taken positions as such at this meeting, and then there's representation from the township that's sent. Um, to the zoning hearing, um, which is taking place in the um fourth Tuesday of the month.
Okay, this is uh, again, we typically either remain neutral or make a recommendation for or against. But the decision, only the decision is the zoning hearing board, so uh. I think instead of taking a motion first, I'll ask if there's any discussion on this, because. That would drive what the motion is on this case. Uh, seeing no discussion, does anyone have a motion?
This is Lisa. I'll move that the Board of Supervisors remain neutral on the request for variance for property located at two fifty Banyan Drive.
Second, Laura.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion at all? That motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Uh, next is uh request for thirty-nine sixty-one West, West Whitehall Road, State College Borough Water Authority.
Thank you, I'm gonna bring you back into my screen momentarily. Um, also with your agenda this evening is a request for variance application filed by the State College Borough Water Authority for the Coker Well Field. Which is located at thirty-nine sixty-one West Whitehall Road. Uh, two new outbuildings are being proposed for construction, and because the property sits on an established floodplain. And the app, the um typically the zoning ordinance would require a letter of map revision. Be secured from the Federal Emergency Management Authority to formally amend the floodplain boundaries prior to construction after the completion. Of the study, the hydraulic um and hydrologic analysis that was conducted. Um, the variance is not actually seeking to permit encroachment in the floodplain, but specifically to exempt. The applicant from the requirement to go through the conditional letter of map revision and ultimately the final letter of map revision process. Uh, through FEMA. They have conducted a detailed hydrologic and hydraulic analysis to determine that it will meet the ordinance requirements concerning. Construction within the floodplain and the impacts on established flood elevations. I don't know whether we have anybody representing the water authority on the call. Um, if I could just ask if anybody's here to, to represent the authority, if you could just speak up. Okay, we don't have anybody here from the authority, that's all I have to introduce.
Okay, so uh, my que, I do have a question on this one. They're just asking for relief from uh. A mapping. Uh, have they proposed anything for building there at this point, or is that?
They, they've not yet submitted a land development plan that would typically come after the, um, if, if the variance is secured. Because that will give them direction moving forward, you know, in terms of whether they need to proceed with the. The letter of map revision, the LOMAR, or whether they can uh move ahead uh with a, a submittal after the fact.
Okay. Does anyone have any questions or comments on this one before we take a motion?
Um, yeah, I have a question, so uh, I wanted to understand the. Uh, the implications of um building in the floodplain. And so, it's, so, so if we, if we oppose this, then. They would not be able to build in the floodplain, and now if we say yes, they would be able to build, is that the upshot of this?
Well, um, not exactly. In this case, the applicant, as my, to my understanding, is not going to propose to build within the established floodplain. Or if they are, they'll be within our ordinance restrictions. Again, not, not having seen a land development plan, I can't say for sure. Where those buildings were proposed to be located, but we do permit by ordinance, uh, building in established floodplains. Provided it can be demonstrated that the increase to the base flood elevations in the floodplain won't be more than one percent. So, um, they've done their report and they're uh able to meet the requirements of the ordinance. So irrespective of whether the variance is granted or denied, um, they would still be able to proceed with submission of their land development plan. Uh, showing the buildings as proposed. However, in the event that the variance is denied, they'll have to go through the extra step. Of securing the letter of map revision from FEMA, which would officially amend the floodplain boundaries as described in their hydro. Hydraulic and hydro logic report.
Okay.
Dave is more of a, Mod Ricker's more of an expert on this kind of thing than I am. I don't know if, if he approves of my description there, or. If there's any inaccuracies in it, but.
Approved.
Oh.
Okay, any other questions or comments? If not, I take a motion.
I move, I Laura moved that the Board of Supervisors remain neutral on the request for variance for the property located at thirty-nine sixty-one West Whitehall Road.
This is Lisa, second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Aye.
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 Hi.
Hi, uh, motion carries. Dave's trying to figure out who's talking.
Got it.
I'm sorry, I think I went to mute there. Next item is a rezoning request from Hillside Farm Estates.
Hey, I'm gonna ask Jenna Wargo, Planning and Zoning Director, to introduce this item.
Alright, so on May twenty-second, Armin D. Sahakian submitted a rezoning application request for his Hillside Farm Estates development. This parcel, three parcels, uh, twenty-four oh oh seven dash oh two three A. Twenty-four dash oh oh seven dash oh two four E and twenty-four dash seven three five oh oh four. Um, they're located approximately at the intersection of East Pine Grove Road and Banyan Drive. They're abutting both sides of East Pine Grove Road and northwest of Sheldon Drive. These properties are currently zoned. Uh, residential, single-family residential, the applicant is requesting townhouse residential, that's R three. Um, the total acreage to be rezoned is seventy-one point six two acres, and majority of the properties are currently undeveloped. The applicant would like to build one and two-story detached, semi-attached and attached dwellings on these parcels. All three parcels are located within the regional growth boundary, um, which is also sewer service area. The materials attached to the agenda were submitted by the applicant, include the current zoning map, proposed zoning map, proposed parkland map. Sewer service area map of Pine Grove Mills and the current design for the single-family residential lots that are located northwest of Sheldon Drive. Um, so with the recently adopted zoning ordinance, the township has essentially codified the rezoning application and request process. And this requires a substantial investment on behalf of the applicant. Uh, so if the board is interested in considering the request, staff is recommending that the applicant be directed to. Complete an impact analysis and refer the request to the planning commission for review and comment.
Thank you. Um, this is a request coming from uh Mr. Sahakian, uh, if you.
What was.
Present, yeah.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, just, this is my third time on Zoom, so. Do you want me to make kind of a presentation? Or was Jenna gonna take over, or you wanted, you had some questions?
Yes, if there's questions, Armin's here, I'd take advantage of it.
Yeah, I, I guess my uh basically was wondering, you know, why you were, were requesting this particular change. Uh, you know, and uh how you see that development occurring in that area as a result of it.
Okay, um, I'm gonna try this. Jenna, I, I hope I don't screw it up. She's trying to teach me how to do the share screen, so hopefully it works. Disabled. It's not working.
Hang on, uh, Armin, lem, I'm gonna see if I can permit you.
Oh, okay.
To share your screen.
Okay. It should be under the house security setting.
Try and give it a go now.
Okay, it came up. Okay. Um, let me, I guess, start, I guess, from the beginning. Can you guys see this now? Okay, this was the original um development plan, and this was done. Back in early two thousand, and the idea was. What was happening twenty years ago was everybody wanted single-family homes and larger lots, and I hate to use the word McMansions. But that's kind of what was happening. Uh, we developed actually kind of in reverse this area right here, phase one A. Um, and then we did phase two over here, which was the actual entrance coming in. Um, then we ran into the housing crisis. So phases three, actually three, four, um, back here, five, six, seven, and eight were never done. In twenty years, and it's, this isn't something new, I've kind of, um, a lot of other developments had. Mixtures of single-family and townhouses and different types of homes. Uh, Stonebridge is one of them. Um. The one up on South Atherton, uh, that backs up to the golf courses there, that's got townhouses in the back. Um. The demographics of home buyers is changing, and it's changing very, very quickly. Uh, right now, believe it or not, millennials are the largest home buying block, and they're between ages of twenty-eight and thirty-eight. Or twenty-three and thirty-eight. Uh, they're making up thirty-eight, thirty-nine percent of uh the home buyers. And I'd like to have some kind of a mix rather than. All the houses being the same size and being the same price. Um, I think one of the things that. Duplexes and townhouses, if you can get them into smaller condominium-like. Um, subdevelopments. Uh. You can get uh the lawn cutting, the landscaping, the snow plowing in one um. One monthly fee that people I think are moving more towards those things. You know, I built, I've got a spec home I've been sitting on for four years on Lowest Lane. And it's in the six hundred thousand dollar price range. Right now, I'm looking at what's available on the market. The amount of homes over five fifty, six hundred thousand is considerable. Let me see if I can. Let me see if I can stop sharing that for a second. And just kind of show you guys what's going on here in single-family detached uh residential. Is it showing up yet or not yet?
No.
Oh, I pressed the air button. There it is. Okay. This is all the homes in the State College School District currently on the market, all. There's no price, there's no square footage. Um, actually, I put the year in there, but that's in the last thirty years. Single-family homes in State College right now, there's, I think. You can see here, one point three million, one point three million, one point one, one point one, nine hundred. It keeps going down, these are all in the eight hundred, seven hundred thousand, seven hundred thousand. There's only three pages of this. We go to the second page. Here's the spec house that I have on Lowest Lane, right here, at six eighty-seven. We've got a whole bunch at six hundred, a whole bunch at five hundred. This is still five hundred, we're still, we're still in the four hundreds on the second page. And the third page is the last of it, on single-family. And the third page is the last of it on single family. You got four hundred thousand, three hundred thousand. And there's only four homes under two hundred eighty five thousand dollars in the State College School District. If we look at townhouses with no price range, condominiums and townhouses up here, a townhouse or a half duplex or condominium. Well, we can kind of throw out these six top ones for one and a half million downtown in the apartment buildings. You're in the four seventy, four fifty and there's only one, two, six, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen. And if you count these like apartment livings, there's maybe eighteen of them. The only new construction that's going in for townhouses is these ones that are getting put into patent township in the Greyswoods Development. And just so you guys know, this is not what I'm looking at building because these are three stories. So you park in your garage on the first floor, then you gotta hike up your groceries up to the second floor and then you gotta hike up to the third floor for your bedrooms. This is not what I'm looking to do. And I think if if we go to a mix that we're gonna keep part of Hillside still single family, but mix in there some duplexes, have some duplexes that are single family live, uh, single floor living for empty nesters and older people, have two story for new home buyers. I mean, I'm reading the the reports right now. The the new, the younger people that want to buy homes, they cannot find starter homes. And they are left with choices to go and maybe rent at some of these apartments. I don't want to name names for other apartments, but some of these townhouses or apartments that are made for students. That's what, those are the choices that they have right now. And I'm not talking about people that are in their twenties. I'm talking about people in their thirties and forties. They they want to get something started. Well, five, six hundred thousand might be out of their price range. But neither do they want to go and live in some something that's basically student living. You've got kids throwing, you know, keg parties right next door. Let me pull up. You guys got most of the maps that I'd kind of given you guys. And this is, this is something I've thought about for about ten years. My, I went through after oh eight, oh eight basically forced not only me, but almost every other small to medium home builder to declare bankruptcy. I had a development in Bellefonte that was exactly that. I was building townhouses and duplexes. The name of it was Rosewood Cove. I couldn't save that one. The bank took that one. And it is actually successful right now. Another builder bought it from a sheriff's sale. And they've been successful for the last years at it. I ended up being able to sell, save Hillside Farm Estates. And I think I think putting in the right mixture will make this development happen. It's basically been dead in the water for the last ten years. And you guys went and, you know, the township bought more land from the Sunday Farm. You guys got the detention basin from Westfield. You guys put together a really, really nice parcel seventeen acre parkland over there. And I know you guys are, the budget is in the two to three million dollar range that you guys want to spend there. The problem is there's nobody living there. So, you know, I'm trying to be would I like to build single family homes? Sure. But I'm also being practical and and looking at what's out there. The market is the market. And, you know, I kind of am looking at you know, in real estate, my my degree from Penn State is in real estate. The first thing we learned was two things, one, location, 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 and two, the highest and best use of the land. Another thing that came up today, Jenna and I were talking and I, Lisa, I'm sorry, I kind of missed this. Apparently COG had a presentation today about land consumption update for the center region and how residential land is basically going a lot quicker because it's not being I hate to say zone properly or built properly, but everything is is kind of getting chewed up and I definitely like to get at some point with you and Jenna and I think Mark was running the presentation for that today. To discuss more of that. Apparently it says over here, over past several months, CRPA staff created a GIS database that includes information for all residential project projects inside the RGB that were created via subdivision or land development plans. So I think that information would be fantastic to be able to kind of show what I know is out there. Oh, by the way, just so everybody knows, I live in the development also. So it thi- this is, this is not something that is, this is extremely personal for me too. I'm not looking at building anything bad. You know, people, well, you're gonna, you're gonna build stuff and just for the money. I live here. I live in the development. So it's, it's, it's very close to me. Let me put up. Also, something else I came up with. Okay, are you guys seeing the zoning map? Okay, um, basically this is the zoning map. All of this lower part, which is yellow and green, it's either R A, R R or forest land. This is undevelopable. So these, these insets that are over here are the only parts that are developable in Ferguson Township. And I look at basically I call this upper part, the multicolor part blob one and the Pine Grove Mills area where I'm located is blob two, which is very small. And I kind of looked at just at blob one because blob two, Pine Grove Mills, that's all there is, is this little area. And to look at what's available as far as R three zoning for townhouses, I kind of basically blew up that area. And R three zoning right here is in the magenta or hot pink color and there's only like three sections and I put star one, star two, star three with the green stars. If you look at it, this is the first star of R three that's on the corner of Circleville, Valley Vista and Science Park. That's what's available. Nothing. Our, this, this area that's R three was a hundred, is a hundred percent built out and it was a hundred percent built out prior to two thousand. These over here are Copper Beach Student Townhouses. And I'll be honest, I mean, I'll, I'll, I'll tell the name. This is where some families are being forced to live because this is all that's available in their price range and and what they're looking for. You know, they want three bedrooms. Okay, this is available. You got parking outside. There's no garages. Delencroft is elderly care. Kinden, Kinden Care is child daycare and these over here, single family townhouses over here were built in the nineteen eighties. So that's star one on the zoning map. If we move to star two over here, it's on Blue Course Drive and Circleville, I think it is. So here's the RE/MAX building over here. There's the giant on North Atherton. This is Blue Course Drive. There's Atherton up there. This entire upper portion that's zoned R three. It's a Tom Tudak Memorial Park and a Tom Tudak Dog Park. You can't, you, that's done. This middle part is Pennsylvania Low Income Housing Townhomes. This is actually regulated by the Pennsylvania HUD as far as low income tax, tax house credits.
Used to be.
It used to be.
Not anymore.
Okay. Cause I know that CPI or that rental place downtown that does that, they were handling that, but these are still rentals, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Um, so you've got that area and that was built, I believe, in the nineties also, early nineties. And then you've got this little section on the other side of Blue Course Drive. And that's, all of these, I think, were built prior to two thousand also. The closest I can give you as an example of what I'm kind of shooting for is down here, you guys are right here, well, you, the Ferguson Township office is here. This is the corner of Whitehall and College Avenue. This R three over here, star number three. This is, I believe it was the Hay Market's part of the Hay Market subdivision or PRD. There's Blue Course Drive here. So again, on the upper section is the Hay Market Park. You've got some duplexes over here. In here, these are either duplexes, quadplexes or townhouses, all of these. And most of them are through Scheller's Bend. And this is the church on Whitehall Road. They've got a little baseball field here. These ones, these little houses were the original things that Scheller's Bend before it was a bend, it was just a little stub street here. These were built over here. And the reason I know and I want to build, I know what I'm building. These townhouses over here off of Blue Course Drive are Graystone Townhomes. I built those townhouses in the mid nineties. I've, I've, I've understood what people wanted over there and I've kind of perfected knowing that, you know, you want to build something that is as close to being able to, to house a small family without saying, well, we've only got two bedrooms. We've got to put two or three kids in one bedroom and one for ourselves or there's no garage. This in my mind was a wildly successful area. And it still is. Almost anything that comes up in this area sells very quickly. And I don't think most people want to sell these because prices have gotten so high that they can't replace what they already have over here. So that's basically it. That's that's the three R three zonings and every one of them was built out pri- you know, there hasn't been R three zoning in Ferguson Township for twenty years. And, you know, this was complete coincidence that, you know, Jenna told me about this COG. What is it called? The Transportation Land Use Plan. I said, this is exactly what I'm talking about. This is, this is the kind of study that they're doing separately by basically saying that they, they think that I don't want to say that they're saying that they need more density. But it says over here from today, it says, consider impact of vacant land availability within the RGB. The two thousand seventeen Regional Development Capacity Report, the REDCAP, indicates that an adequate amount of development capacity exists within the RGB to accommodate future growth. The REDCAP report estimates were calculated on the assumption that development potential is maximized based on underlying zoning. Most properties are not developed at or near the development potential allowed by local sorting ordinances. Like I said, a lot of those are three sections that were already in Ferguson Township, they're parks. That's not being maximized for for what it was supposed to be zoned. It says this can result in lower density projects that consume land more quickly than anticipated in a REDCAP report. As a result, land within the RGB may be being consumed more quickly than anticipated. So I don't want to switch lanes and do something completely different. These are going to be, what I'd like to do is to and this is one of the, one of the differences with what I do. I'm the developer, but I also am the home builder and I designed the homes. And like I said, I live here. It's difficult for me to try and explain how in simplest words, they're all going to be complementary to each other. It's not going to be that one townhouse is going to be sitting next to a house that's going to be next to another townhouse. They're going to be if you guys are familiar with like toff trees, toff trees has like certain sections, Turtle Creek and Deer Crossing, but they're all part of toff trees. What I'd like to do is have sub, sub, sub sections of, of this place to be similar to that. So you would have you know, a small little section of it be townhouses and be, I don't know, the the gates at Hillside Farm Estates Development. So they would be all, all within each other. As far as, just to give you an idea what, what I'm thinking. As far as this is these are townhouses behind Olive Garden. Again, I think they look nice. These are in that third phase that I told you off Scheller's Bend. This is Cobble Creek. These sold out amazingly in the early two thousands. These are some duplexes that are being built. I believe the development is called Arrow, Arrow Point. It's towards the airport in Patent Township. These are duplexes that are, I believe, across the street from Cato Park on Gala Drive. These are townhouses in Harris Township towards a little past Bollesburg. Same ones again. These are some townhouses near Tea Berry Ridge. Again, the same type of townhouses. This is my development that I did in Bellefonte, Rosewood Cove. They were ranch homes. We sold probably ten of them before we even broke ground on them. This is again, these are the two stories and Rosewood Cove was a mixture of two duplex ranches. One of these fourplex townhouses that were two stories that again, they complemented each other. You would have, you would be able to have different types of homeowners living in the same neighborhood. This is Tanglewood Townhomes. This is on Valley Vista Drive. And again, these are duplexes, so this is one half of it. The other half is a carbon copy on the other side. These ones are the village at Penn State, I believe it is. Um. That's down the street from Toth Trees a little bit. This is a duplex. This is half of a duplex. These are Wilt Tree Townhomes. This is right next to the YMCA. And I think that was it. So, I mean, you know, all of these places have been built out for years and years. Nobody else has built anything like, you know, townhouses. And the only thing being built right now, like I said, is um in Graves Woods in Patton Township from the other side from um going from five fifty or whatever that Unimart is, you have to get in through there. And there are three stories. You've got the garage on the first floor uh and then two more floors on top of that. So I know that there's been a lot of multifamily, but the only multifamily that's going in is the Heights on Blue Course Drive, student housing. Toll Brothers, student housing. There's not been anything that is and technically th- these aren't called multifamily. These are still called, all of them are called either single family detached, single family attached, and single family semi-detached. Um. There's nothing being built for regular families, regular people. Um, so you know, if you guys have any questions. I, I, I got all the time in the world. I know uh Dave probably is like, cut it short.
No, that's uh, but if I can just uh put a bow on it, these, these processes are typically quite lengthy, particularly of a magnitude that Mr. Sahakian's asked the board to consider. Um, really at this point, I think Jenna and I just thought it would be prudent for us to put this initial conceptual request in front of you and then give, you know, you an opportunity to tell staff uh whether you're interested in, in proceeding with requesting a completed application to be submitted or not. Um, they caused particularly a request to increase um the density of zoning within the regional growth boundary. There's a number of reviewing agencies that would be involved in this request. Um, Center Regional Planning Agency and University Area Joint Authority, State College Borough Water Authority include some of those. And so um there would have to be some careful analysis that would be conducted uh prior to the matter being presented to the board for your ultimate consideration and enactment. Um, but if there's no interest in proceeding, well, then we can identify that this evening and then that gives us also direction as well as to Armin. Um, you know, about what to expect or, or what maybe to reconsider.
Okay, thanks, Dave. Uh, yeah, so basically, as Dave indicated, really, I think this is sort of a, a chance for us to say either we're not interested, so don't, don't put a lot of investment into an impact analysis or to refer to the planning commission and start a process which, you know, the vote tonight would not be yes or no, we want to do this. It's really a, are we interested in considering it? And if we're not, then it would be better for everybody to say so immediately. If we're interested in considering it, that's not a commitment to any particular thing. Uh, Armin has given us a, an overview of what he sees it going to, but through the uh planning commission and through the impact analysis and the other feedback we would get, we would determine what ultimately comes before us for a final decision. So I guess if there are any questions at this point, uh either for the process for Dave or Jenna or uh, or the vision that Armin's put up or what he sees it being, we'd go with that and uh either take a motion or uh just say we're not interested. So.
Chair Lisa is asking for recognition.
Um, I'm sorry, I think I, there might be a resident trying to get on the Zoom call right now.
I don't see any participants in the waiting room. Let me dial back and actually tune out of the extension. No, nobody's in the extension either.
Okay, let me see if I can help her out. She contacted me.
Okay, well, Laura is doing that. Do you have something Lisa or?
Yeah, I'll go ahead. Um, Armin, thanks so much for the presentation. Um, that's and for referring to the Tulum meeting today. It was really interesting and I'll actually do a recap um later, but in your presentation, it did relate to me too, um, the discussion that we had there. And just to um, you know, to kind of reemphasize what Armin said, it was a study that about um, you know, land consumption right now and um, in housing. Um, part of that conversation was actually about how different areas of the regional growth boundary are. So you'll have areas of the growth boundary very close to town and then areas like we have out here that border ag land. So they're actually so different. And we talked about dividing up that data that um that they're collecting at CRPA and looking at it a little bit more, um, in a little bit more detail because it's apples and oranges to just say um, land within the RGB sometimes. So um, and I agree with um, your statement on the need for this diverse um kind of housing in the area, some more smaller lot, lower cost, lower footprint, family housing, you know, it's been identified as a need. So I'm not at all disagreeing with that need. I do think that this wouldn't be the place for that. Um, given that it is, it actually a butts, a preserved farm and ag land on either side and parkland. Um, you know, the access, lighting, noise, density in that area, I think for me would, you know, stop me from wanting to move forward with an, an R three proposal there in that particular area. You know, we've got um you know, like the approved plan for Pine Hall has mixed use and that's closer into um bus lines, bike paths, you know, some different kinds of transportation amenities and um, the services. So I think that's kind of a more appropriate place for that kind of thing. And even when I was on the planning commission, when the Harner Farm subdivision came up, I had expressed support of doing um townhome development in that area. So I was disappointed that didn't occur there. But where this specifically is located, I wouldn't be supportive of moving an R three change at this point.
But let me, let me just say the let me uh pull this in real quickly also. Uh, this is your guys, I guess, the visual chart on the difference between um R one and R three. And I kind of, I kind of cut and pasted a little bit, so it's easier to see uh the, the drawings and stuff. I moved around a little bit. The Lisa, I understand what you're saying as far as townhouses. But townhouses technically, the only difference between townhouse, a duplex and a single family house, and that's why I said, all of the, these are not I know it's easy to call them multifamily, but they're not. This is where we're at right now is the R one zoning. This is what I can build right now. I can build R one, single family detached. I would rather not get forced into a situation where I end up becoming more of a businessman and saying, screw it. If the only way I can sell stuff, I, I'm not going to sit here. We're all, we're all getting older. I'm going to die one of these days. I can't sit here and wait for the, the market to become what I want it to be or what I've planned it to be. If it's changed, then I'm going to have to be a businessman and right now my lots are probably averaging third to half an acre. If you look over here, I'm allowed to go down on R one zoning down to ten thousand square feet. So my density technically, and if you go down here, go down to R three. Single family home, you're going down to forty-five hundred square feet, I mean seventy-five hundred square feet versus ten thousand. So the amount of density on a single family detached home is not that much more. If you put townhouses in and the townhouse and the duplex, the only difference ends up be, being between semi-detached and attached is semi-detached is a duplex and you only share one shared wall between the two units. On an R three, you're allowed to attach on both sides. You can have shared walls on both sides. But that does not change the underlying lot size, the minimum lot size under each unit. So be it a duplex, a fourplex, a sixplex, the mathematics are exactly the same. And most of it gets driven by your coverage over here on the building. Your building coverage is thirty percent on either single family or attached units. On R one, your building coverage is thirty percent. So I can sit here and basically what, what I'm saying is this. Let me, let me pull this up again one more time.
Were we actually having board discussion at this time? Um, or are we just, is this just question and answer? Just curious.
I'm just, I just, I just want to kind of uh make sure that I'm kind of ex- explaining correctly what the difference is because be- between R one and R three, the, the difference, I know it sounds like, boy, we're jumping up from R one to R three. See this townhouse that's in the, the village at Penn State that it's off of air, going towards the airport. I can build this half, come over ten or twenty feet, build the same half and meet my R one zoning. The only difference is happening is you're putting in a uh adjoining wall. That is all that's happening. The density will go up a little bit, but it's not, you're not going to end up tripling the density or having something that's forty feet high in the air. So I guess my question Lisa is when you're saying not out here, should I just build giant McMansions on one acre houses? I'm allowed to build smaller houses and I don't want to be forced into that, that. And I'm not saying this in a bad way, but I have, I have to make a decision. If I can build something that's going to be nice and is going to be more affordable. And that's, that's the key over there. When I can put these two units together and have a shared wall, the cost goes considerably lower. Or I can say, okay, they're not going to let me do that. I can build single family detached homes. I'll split them apart. I'll make the lots the minimum. What? You, going from a six hundred and fifty thousand, six hundred seventy thousand dollar single family home down to five seventy-five isn't doing a big deal. If I can have the cost savings of putting them together and go down almost in half in price, now we're talking about affordability. The difference between six fifty and five fifty, I don't think is a huge affordability jump. But if that's what I need to do to sell more homes, then that's what's going to end up happening. And then I'm changing the entire neighborhood to that. And the existing neighborhood ends up being an outlier that all the existing lots are somewhere around point four acres. And everything else is going to go down to ten thousand square feet, which is point two, one point two-two acres. There's a development going in, in uh Bollesburg right now. I would suggest you guys drive over there and see what a single family development looks like out there. It's called uh Rocky Ridge. Drive out there and see how close those houses are to each other and they're in the five fifty to six hundred thousand range. My house over here is about thirty-five hundred square feet, thirty-six hundred square feet. Those are under three thousand. They're all maxed out at the minimum. All those lots are point two acres. Go out there and see how much more cramped that looks. And I think in my opinion, all these houses that are separated but close to each other looks a lot busier and a lot more on top of each other than putting them together into smaller areas. So you know, you'd have to go to R four to build on top of each other. But R one, R two, R three, the only difference is R one, they have to be detached. R two is a duplex, semi-detached, meaning one shared wall. R three, multiple shared walls on each side. But like I showed you, the R one, R two, R three requirements for minimum maximum, the lot footprint doesn't change that much. I mean, I'm
For that one use category.
Right.
So it'd be half the size in the other use category. But I'm, you know, the problem is once we, once it's rezoned, then you have a permitted use by right for any of those things in R three.
Understood, but here's, here's the, here's the discussion I was having with Dave and Jenna. You guys just in November got a new zoning ordinance. And the rezoning of that now asks for the worst case scenario. And my discussion with staff was, well, what is the worst case? And the worst case they said was what is your intent to do that? Let me ask you something. You, you, you brought this up. I mean, I've, this, this isn't anything new for me. I've been thinking about this for seven years. We started at rezoning with Mark Kunkel before. Th- this is how long ago this has been going on. He had suggested years ago, many years ago, why don't you go for PRD? Once I got about this deep in a PRD, Toll Brothers came up. PRD became a three-letter swear word. And I said, well, right after Toll Brothers, I go in with a PRD, they're gonna, they're gonna want to skin me alive. So I don't know, I mean, is that something more that you guys are more open to is a PRD versus a rezoning?
Laura.
Um, well, I guess, Armin, I appreciate all the information. You come from a different perspective. It's a very specific perspective and I do appreciate learning more about that. But when we're considering a rezoning request, it's not, that's the whether the market can absorb it is certainly a factor, but there are many other factors too. And the main factor for me, as I interpret my duties, is, is this going to be beneficial to the overall community? And when you and I talked about this, I expressed some concerns about transportation. If we're going to be upzoning that much and having that product in that area and where that's going to be connecting and what that's going to mean for the community. We talked about lighting um and the more intense lighting, certainly you can not argue the fact that an R three development is much more lit than an R one typically. Um, that's a huge factor in the Pine Grove Mall Small Area Plan. While they're looking for vibrancy and perhaps some density, I don't imagine that they're looking for this much in the community. Um, so
Laura, what, what do we do?
I, Armin, I just need to interrupt you right now because you've really had a very, very long time to talk.
Okay.
And I appreciate that this is your project and you've thought about it a long time and we're definitely willing to listen, but you also have to be willing to listen to us.
Okay.
So when I looked at this, my concern was that you're, you're asking for everything in there to be, to be upzoned. And I don't think that's going to be received well with the community.
Okay. Okay.
If, if that's received well with the community and also staff can assure me some of these impacts that I have a concern about. I might be willing to move it forward, but right now as it is. I'm not and sort of learning about the market and the products and what things look like is probably not going to be what does it for me. So.
Okay. Patty.
Um, I just kind of wanted to echo what Laura and Lisa were saying. I'm not in favor of it. Um, I actually used to live over in the Village of Penn State, or I should say, we owned a place over there, which we ended up selling. And speaking to the community there, while it's lovely and it's appealing visually, um. I, I don't know, Armin, if you've ever gone to the Village of Penn State, particularly Versity Hollow, which is what you were showing us. Um, if you go there, they're empty. They, they are strictly um purchased by. People and they come basically for football games or so it's not really a community and um.
Well, well, that was marketed for, for that purpose.
No, that versity hollow was, I mean, where we, they did have game day condos, the whole thing. But, but that's what's happened and it just seems to me that that's sort of what's taken off and so that's what happens in these communities is that. Residents seem to live there part, you know, only seven times a year and then otherwise they sit empty. Because they're affordable, because they're more affordable, so they get purchased.
I understand, but that, that. Then. Answers Laura's question of all the traffic. If they're going to sit empty, you're going to get the tax dollars and they're going to sit empty without traffic.
No, Armin, we, we actually don't want to use up a bunch of land space to have a non occupied buildings like that does not a community make and it's absolutely antithesis. To or antithetical to what the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan is looking for.
But it's been a.
I don't, I don't know if that's a likely situation or not, but I respect what Patty's experience is telling her and that, that's not a solution to me.
I, I, I would say here though, I think if, if this is the, the argument is that. All houses in that price range are good, bought, bought up and rented, we've got a lot bigger problems. I mean, I, I sort of favored this. Because I think we need more houses in an affordable range. I know people looking for houses who are saying. There's nothing out there that I can afford to buy and I. As. I think. Yeah, but I. I do think that it's, yeah, if we can do something to increase that, it'd be good, but. You know, that's where we're gonna have to decide.
But I also feel Steve that there are houses like my neighborhood where I live now is, is affordable and houses come up and they need work. Um, I guess I, it's.
But.
I think everybody.
Construction houses too. I think people are looking for newer stuff. I mean, it's.
It's sort of percentage, yes.
Yeah, so I, I have the opposite opinion to. Uh, I suppose the majority here. Um, so I lived in Scheller's Bend for two years. And I really liked uh that community, so we would uh talk to people uh who would live around us. They were usually young. Uh, professionals are uh post docs and things like that. And uh these were townhouses in Scheller's Bend in the first part, which I think Armin mentioned as the first link. Um, and then of course, uh, we wanted a bigger place and uh my ex-wife wanted a bigger place, so we moved here. And um. I, i- it's possibly also philosophically, um. I support it because uh I think the R one zoning has the single family and zoning has called a lot of urban sprawl in this country. And um Minnesota, actually Minneapolis uh has abolished the single family zoning and has seen the communities become more of a community and. Uh, more affordable and more diverse and things like that. So I, I do also think that there is a lack of affordable housing. Um, here in State College and. Creating these units would possibly help us. Um, I do uh want uh to make sure that uh the transportation issues, the lighting issues and all of these things are considered fully. Um, so. At this point, my uh leaning is towards a yes to going forward to referring it to the committee. Uh, yeah.
Thank you.
Hey, I want you guys to know that I'm, I'm.
Uh, I want to make sure we're all on the same page with this too. My understanding here is before, like before. I have tried to like say, oh, could we move it forward but make these little changes to it? My understanding is this is an all or nothing package. We either move this proposal forward or we do not. My understanding is also that if we decided not to move this proposal forward. If the developer were interested in getting a proposal moved forward, they might come back with a proposal that met some of our requests. And did more of a balance. So I think that I've heard everybody on our board about the need for affordable housing. But I've think that I've heard everybody except for one person talk about concerns of the impact of this. So I think my feeling would be that although I would be open to doing some jo- zoning changes, this isn't it. This is too much, too fast. And that I would prefer to reject this if, if it's true that we can't. Ask for revision to this. Um, to reject this and uh be open to a different proposal.
So. Look, just so I, I know what you're asking for, you'd like me to. To say no to this, for me to come back to you guys. With a. Alternative before you guys kick it to the planning commission? Or would you like to get maybe the planning commission to get some input? And then to come back with. Some give and take, I guess, like you were saying.
I think that's a good question. I feel pretty strongly that up zoning that entire area that you've requested is going to be a no go in all ways. So I wouldn't want to waste anybody's time, but I am very interested in getting the planning commission's input. On a different proposal, but I'm also very interested in getting the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plans Committee Advisory Board. I'm very interested in getting their input into a proposal, but the things that I'm suggesting, I don't even know if there's like a. A way that that could actually happen inside the constraints of local government, so.
So I can maybe offer just a few thoughts um on what Mr. Nanny suggested and then. Forgive me, I'm kind of developing them as they come out. But um, I mean, generally I would, I would frame it maybe a little bit differently. I think the rezoning process, at least the stage that we're in right now. Um, with Armin and what he's proposed is still very fluid. Um, as we, if the board is interested in proceeding any further. And there's continued deliberation with the planning commission. Uh, the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Board, the Board of Supervisors, other agencies that may have interest in reviewing the request. Uh, then that can be revised and massaged and amended before it comes in front of the board for a final vote. Uh, directing authorization for advertisement for public hearing. Ultimately, the zoning map is amended by ordinance of the board. So there's quite a bit of time and opportunity between now and when we reach the proverbial point of no return before it can't be amended any further before the board chooses to act on it now. To your point though, I think if, if Armin had a proposal that he said, look, this is, this is what I'm asking for. And you know, vote it up or if you can vote it up or vote it down, well, that, that's the process that we have with a property owner's request. To amend um their, their zoning district and so. You know, it would be within their uh prerogated to say. This is, I, I'm not interested in amending it any further. This is what I want. You know, take it or leave it. And then of course, it would be the board's prerogative to say, we're going to leave it. We're not interested in, in adding density or, or up zoning that particular track. So uh, you know, alternatively, there's been other. You know, um avenues that I've seen the board in the past to take this and, and I, I believe um some of you are. Mr. Nanny and Mr. Miller were on the board for the zoning amendment that took place in North Atherton Street in the corridor from office commercial to general commercial. Um, in that case, there were properties that were zoned, that were rezoned. Um, irrespective of the request of the property owners and they, they didn't ask for it. Um, because it was up zoning, increasing uh the allowance in the zoning rather than decreasing it. There was no property rights that were taken away or infringed on. There's no allowances that were taken away. Um, it was simply an, an, an extra allowance that property owners could take advantage of. So the board could. You know, if there were interest in up zoning a piece of the tract. You know, proceed through that route that may be more in line with your vision for that is, then it would be up to the property owner, Armin, Armin in this case. Decide whether he were interested in submitting a modified plan that were in step with that amended zoning, zoning designation.
And, and Dave, like you were saying, as far as another uh rezoning, the. Harner Farm. I don't know all the details about it, but I know there was a section that had come in that was, I guess, R two. And then.
Yes, Harner Farm, Harner Farm was modified from its initial proposal to when it was ultimately enacted by the Board of Supervisors to. What originally included a townhouse portion to remove it and replace it with single family residential.
Okay, and. And Laura, I'm, I'm okay to talk and as Dave said, to, to massage it and, and to uh. Discuss it. The, I think you're taking the entire, when I drew everything, R three. For rezoning, I think you're taking that as every last square inch of that, he's going to put townhouses. That is not my, my goal. One of the things I was trying to show you guys with the other R threes. One third of those were parkland. I'm not saying that I'm going, going to do that, but if I. It becomes. Designing something before, so if I'm going to design something. Before the rezoning, that becomes a PRD.
Dave, can I ask a question for clarification about how we get Parkland zoned R three? My understanding is that when a development is done, there's parkland.
Welcome to Altec Lansing.
That there's parkland that's donated and then that just retains that underlying zoning and we don't change it to like park zoning. Um, is that basically how that happens like that? So. Yeah.
Right, generally that's the case. A, a park is considered a place of assembly, which is permitted in, in, I think all zoning ordinances are all zoning districts rather. So if there were parkland that were offered for dedication. Um, it would be unlikely that the township would change the zoning designation on that parcel. In fact, it would probably, depending on what it were changed to, it may not be permissible to do so. For spot zoning concerns, but.
Gotcha.
That we would. We just made it underlying zone.
One of those quirks that we can't, you know, get that refined because of certain Pennsylvania laws, but it's not like we go around going like, oh, let's use up all the. R three zoning by making a park here. It's probably found in. Any residential zoning district and any mixed use zoning district and. I don't know, maybe all of them.
Well, my point was that in R three, I might be able to, I, I will. Have certain areas that are going to be single family detached to keep certain of these stub streets that I have kind of going. So it's not going to be all townhouses and that's, that was part of, you know, when Jenna wrote, I guess, the um, the narrative for it was that I'm looking at building. Single family detached, which is basically. Single family homes. Single family semi detached, which is duplexes and single family attached. Now. If you want me to. When I do the entire section R three. Then I can put in my roads afterwards rather than say, okay, this section I want R one. This little section we want R three, this section we want R two. And then it becomes, I mean, I. If that's what you want, I can try and draw a map with. Different little sections of, hi, I'd like to rezone this little four acres R three. This three acres R two. In the middle strip, R one, then down here, R three. If you'd like me to try and break it down that way. I can do that, but I think, I think you kind of misunderstood when I, when you're saying that you're asking for all of this and like a giant bazooka of R three for everything.
So Armin, not to be a doomsday kind of person, but. It, let's just hypothesize that we, we're like, oh, we love that idea because I do like mixed use. I, I grew up in a neighborhood that has like a lot of different. Kinds of uses, but. Anyway, um, let's just say we like it, but then we upzone it to R three and lo and behold, you have a big change in your life and you sell it to another developer and they're like, we're going to pack as much R three in there as we can. There's no guarantee for us. And so when we're making this decision. I appreciate what you're saying and that does matter, but it's not necessarily a guarantee.
Laura, I completely hundred and ten percent agree with you because that's the exact same thing that I said to Jenna and to Dave. I said, I said, but. Armin drops dead tomorrow, somebody else picks it up and, and decides to do some, they want to build all daycare centers and old folks homes there. Well, they can do that. And, and. You know, I guess that's my question is. I- if you want. But even in the R two. You know, there, there's other things we, you can do in all these different zonings. Um. I mean, I'll just ask, what's, what's, what's your thoughts on? PRD versus rezoning?
Well, I'm not sure about how that process goes because I think that something like the underlying zoning drives some parameters of the PRD, although.
It does, but it still becomes a PRD and it's the, my, my end. My end use is going to be the same.
Well, Dave.
It, it's, it's, it's ending the cat two different ways. It's, it's, I can go the PRD route or I can go the rezoning route. The end result is still what I'm looking to do. Single family detached, single family semi detached, single family attached.
I just would, um, I guess I'm just going to come out and say again that I'm still not in favor of it and even if you were to break it down and my concerns are just because. Yes, I understand that State College needs more affordable housing, but it's, it, the housing then is therefore affordable to everybody. And that's not just people in State College who are looking. It's affordable to people who are graduating and want to come back and get, you know, away to the country, et cetera. And I do have concerns about the shared walls, um particularly with no fire station out there and we're still fumbling through out there and I understand. That code requires there be firewalls in between, but I also understand that they burn down as well and. So I think just too many things that I feel that I'm not going to support sending it over to planning and that's just where I stand.
Okay, I mean, I, I, everything that you said, Patty, I. Anybody can buy anything. People from California can come up here and buy million dollar homes. They don't have to buy that. And what you're saying as far as shared walls. I mean, there's, that's. I, 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 I don't even know how to, how to answer that. That's. Something that. You know, you're coming up with. Now let me, let me ask you something, Patty. You're saying you don't, you don't support this. If I build, I have R one zoning.
Yeah, that's fine.
And similar, no, no, stop for a minute. Laura had said something at one of those meetings at the Pine Hall that I, I was like, wow. She got it. Some lady in the audience said, I don't think we, you guys should approve this because they're going to cut the trees down. Laura's response was, it's their property. They're going to cut the trees down no matter what. I have R one zoning. My question to you is, just, just so I kind of know where we're headed with this. If I build, I have R one, I can build single family detached homes.
Right.
And again, those can be bought by people from out of town also. There's no, there's no prerequisite. If I can build two hundred single family detached houses. Versus two hundred. Semi. Attached homes. Tell me what your thoughts are. Is it a numbers issue for you? Is it the attachment that's an issue? Is it the firewall? Is it the price? I mean, I, I always get the sense that you don't want me to build cheap houses that.
I don't think that's what she's saying. I just, I don't appreciate the, this back and forth. Um, I think it's, I, I think we need to move forward to a vote. I think this needs to go to a um, maybe a discussion with staff or something.
Well, I. I'm open to, to discussion. If you guys want to have a work session, I'm okay with that.
I, I've let this go as a back and forth discussion. Because this is something that the board seems. You know, to work better if we have more information upfront.
Okay.
And I think that. You know, we're. We're in a, a, a process where the discussion is key because we're deciding, do we want to consider something? It's a change or do you say no? And I'm trying to get as much information one way or the other. that's a change or do, so I say no, and I'm trying to get as much information one way or the other before we make that decision.
I, I do appreciate that. I appreciate that. I think that the tone needs to, um, is getting a little bit, um, tense.
What I, what I would, like, but what I want to say is that I think if we're saying no, my question for the board, and I'll just ask if anybody wants to respond to this. Because we're getting into a situation that I think is similar to what we had with Horner Farm. Where we jumped into it with a proposal, did a vote, it was one to four against. But everybody wanted something to happen. So the reason I'm letting this discussion go is I'm trying to find out, does everybody want something to happen? And if so, what information do we need to give to Armin about what we want to happen? Or do we just want nothing to happen and leave it the way it is? So that, I, I mean, I agree, we need to move on, but I'm just explaining my reason for letting it go the way it has. Which is my real question for the board, and maybe I'll ask this question with no further discussion of the board, is, yo, do we want to move forward? You know, with the rezoning, or do we want to move forward by moving this to planning commission, having discussion from there? We want something else to come back to us? Or do we just want to say, no, we're not interested in results? And I'm, I'm trying to get to the point where everyone can answer that question before we pick a vote. So that, that's all I'm doing on that.
I, I understand. I do appreciate that. And I think it's important to get all the information out. I think what I was looking to hear also was that there was some middle ground between, you know, the kind of density that is potential in R three and what exists as the typical layout in that development now for single family homes. So, you know, is there some middle ground for smaller, lower cost, single family homes? And I didn't, I didn't hear that, but I think that's what I would be looking for. I wouldn't want to, to send this at this point with this request to planning commission. I would not be in favor of that. What I think I would appreciate hearing is some, um, you know, thoughts in the future of, um, you know, some some scaled down, single family homes. So not necessarily the, the large footprint that exists there in the, um, in the plan now.
So you'd like me to maybe come back with something? I'm just, I just, I, I need a little bit of, I guess, direction is what I, what I'm looking for is what.
Well, that, I think that's what I was looking to hear was if there was an alternative from the style of house that's in the single family development that exists there now. So that size footprint of house, that size lot, if there was ever considered an alternative to that. So looking maybe more at like, um, you know, Martin's Landing, that area where it's a smaller footprint house, a smaller sized lot, you know, they're, they're, you know, a lower price.
So Armin's plan was submitted in early two thousand and he is vested under that ordinance at that time. But he also has the option to resubmit with our new zoning ordinance and the dimensions with the decreased lot size. You still have single family homes. That's not really changing, but we did make substantial changes to the R one for lot sizes.
That would just reduce that, you know, the traffic impacts, lighting noise, all those kinds of things we've already discussed as, um, potential negatives.
But you're actually, you're talking about them on R one, keeping it R one zoning and just a new landfill.
Yeah, you'd be resubmitting under the new ordinance.
If that's what you have in mind and you're not interested in getting back another proposal for rezoning, that we say that, I mean, that, that, that can be done under R one zone. It can be smaller lots with more houses.
But that was my question.
Okay, so I also, so to weigh in, um, I, um, I would support something like what Lisa's saying, but I'm also open to seeing another proposal. My, um, my desire is to have, if it's possible, the input of the small area plan folks. Because I think that I am supposed to be a voice for them and I have worked with them for a long time, but still don't necessarily feel like I would want to Armin, mislead you on what I think that they might like or not. So I don't know if there's any space in this process for a simple, like, discussion at the small area plan to.
You and I have talked before, you know, I'm open, open to that. Steve, let me ask you, th- th- this is something that I'd had a long time ago with one of the zoning variants. What's your guys' thoughts about rather than taking a vote on this, to table this vote and then for me to come back with two weeks after? I mean.
Any vote, any motion to table at this point, where this is, to this point, it's been a discussion completely. So we can stop right here and.
Rather, rather than take a vote now and then come back with more information, Laura and I can meet, uh, we can meet with the cog and look at, look at their stuff and I can come up with, you know, we can have discussions. I'm, I'm, I'm open to that, but you know, I.
My feeling is if we, if we did take a motion right now, it appears it would fail. So if you're open to doing that and looking at another, what, another proposal to bring back to us.
And, and this motion would fail. It's not to say that I can't come back two weeks from now with, okay, I want to do R three here, R two here, but rather than me coming back repeatedly for the same thing and going, what do you guys think? And just getting a no, I'd rather get a little bit of back and forth and feedback and say, hey, we like that. Don't do this. Move this around.
Uh, that, that's what I would propose we do right now because I don't think there's a need for motions. I think if there was one, it would fail, but I don't think everyone's agreed that it should just be a no and the end of it. So I would propose we wrap up this discussion right now. Uh, I don't think we'll be discussing it again in two weeks, but because I think it'll take longer than that to get to a point where there's something more, something to bring back into discussion again, but I.
Now, question for both Steve and for Dave. I- if we end up having a work session, do we have to keep it under three members at a time to not meet that quorum? Or can we have a work session to look at, sit down and look at plans and go, yeah, you know, Laura likes this, Lisa likes this, let's do this, for everybody to kind of look at stuff rather than.
That would have to be a scheduled and advertised work session, which is, we can do and have done in zoning.
So it would be a scheduled work session. Okay.
But we can do that if there's something, yo, because that keeps us from having this discussion at every meeting. And we generally try, try to avoid this discussion in the meeting, but I felt that one thing, uh, the, the opinions aren't so diverse that we needed to have some discussion here tonight, but I think that might be the best way to go is come back with some ideas and then maybe consider a work session where we could sit down and and actually, uh, have this discussion as the topic of the meeting.
I would support to having the small, the Pine Grove Mills, um, small area plan committee look at this now that we have members. You know, they're representative of that community. I think they'd offer some valuable input into, you know, to getting you into a direction of, um, having some, um, ideas that would be supported.
I agree, Lisa. I mean, I already said it, but I can't emphasize it enough i- i- to be an agenda item on their agenda. I know they could come if we're having work session. I'm not sure yet, but, um, you know, to, for them to be focused on that on an, in an agenda item, I think would be really helpful and beneficial.
So Dave and Jenna, how do you feel about that as a way to go forward? I, I guess, it also does involve staff time, so.
Yeah, I think, um, the one comment I would offer, uh, not to necessarily convince the board to proceed or, or to proceed in a different direction is I, you know, part of the reason that Jenna and I wanted to get this in front of the group, uh, this evening is because, you know, we've been, we've been spending a good deal of time working with Armin, you know, having some meetings and discussions with him. So is the zoning officer, talking about what some potential options are for that, um, particular piece of land. And it was really getting to the point where without knowing, you know, with some certainty, frankly, whether the board was even interested in enter- in entertaining the discussion. I, you know, I was not in a, in a level of comfort to dedicate more staff time to working towards something that, that may be, you know, dead on arrival. But if there is interest, which it sounds like there is in, in proceeding with some kind of an analysis or, you know, having the board entertain some application that's yet to be, um, you know, better defined, then I think, you know, Armin has some good notes to take back from the discussion this evening. You know, Jenna and I have some thoughts that we can, um, further reflect on. And, um, you know, we can, we can continue to work with the applicant, but I would, encourage the board to require that a, an application of, an official, formal application be submitted with proper, you know, fees and escrow established that can properly account for the time that we spend um, in conducting some of our reviews. When it gets to the point where it's a little bit better defined and a little less nebulous than what it is right now. You know, part of the thi- the issue that I think Jenna and I are grappling with is with the new ordinance, the new zoning ordinance, which is a little bit of a deviation from what we've historically done, places a lot of the onus on the applicant and, you know, of course, there's arguments that it should for the, you know, conducting this impact analysis, preparing some scenarios for the board to consider that give you some sense of what the most intense use of that lot might be. And so there, there's a good deal of work that goes into it on the part of the applicant. And even as things may be fluid and might evolve a little bit throughout the discussion before it's ready to be presented to the board for a public hearing, um, you know, all those variables are going to change as well. So, you know, if we're just talking about, well, let's, you know, let's put it on in, in front of the small area plan advisory board, have them, you know, have some engagement with Armin, you know, staff will have some engagement, you know, maybe some of the board members will provide their input to him as well as he prepares something that we can do that and we can come back to the board with a similar agenda item in the future. And just say, here's, you know, here's what we've worked on. Are you still interested in proceeding with an application? Or have there been any kind of, um, you know, real non-starters that have been introduced along the way that, that we think it's just best to move on without it. But in any case, I would suggest that, you know, before we get too far into it, one way or the other, that the applicant be directed to, to formally submit.
And I guess I'll just ask the board for a general, you know, do we think it's worth going forward with that or are we in a position where we're not really interested in a rezoning? At all. I mean, I, I think that's the real question for tonight. If there, if going through that exercise will lead us back to a point where we don't have support for rezoning, then I don't see a point in going forward. If there's a possibility that we come up with something that would be acceptable to the board or, you know, as a majority anyway, then it'd be worth moving forward with it. So I guess that, that's sort of my question right now to tie this up. Because I don't think we're going to forward it to the planning commission right now, but I just want to get a feeling, are, is it worth going forwards at all?
And, and that's what, what I'm, I'm here for. I mean, if you guys say, you know what, we're willing to consider other things, I'm willing to entertain things and then we can talk. But if the answer is, and I'll be blunt, hell no, we're not rezoning one square inch of it past R one, then at least I know, I'm not, I don't want to waste my time, Dave's time, Jenna's time, your guys' time. I can just go ahead and come up with a new development plan for R one zoning. That's all, all I'm saying is I just need a direction. I, I'm at a, I'm at a Y in the road. If you guys are open to exactly what Steve, you just said was any kind of rezoning, then let's, let's keep on this path and let's discuss this. If it's an absolute no to any rezoning at all in any capacity, then let me know, then I don't, I can just move on with my engineering and site development plan for R one zoning, which I already have. That's, I, I'm at this crossroads and I'm standing here. I've been standing here for 10 years and I kind of need to get a move on, one, one direction or the other. That's, that's all I'm saying. And, and part of my frustration, it's not with you guys. I've, I've waited for 10 years. I just need to know. I know in my heart that the development that I wa- I want to do, that I have envisioned in my head is going to be a great development. That, that's all, so.
So at this point, I'm just going to ask the board for, you know, I feel for, yeah, wh- what do you think we should do at this point? Move forward or just say R one is where we want to stay?
Okay, I would like to move it to the small area plan committee without any guarantee of moving it forward past there to get input from the community because that's what it's there for.
I would be supportive as well of moving it to the small area plan committee. I really would be probably not in favor of rezoning the large fifty-two acre lot from R one. The other smaller lots along Pine Grove Road, the sixteen acres and the other, I'm not sure, maybe that's all part of it, the, the parcels that border Pine Grove Road. That I would be open to, uh, looking at rezoning.
I, I concur with what Lisa had said and what Laura had said. I'd prefer to hear what the people who actually live out there say, and I just don't like it as it is now.
Just don't, don't, don't forget, guys, I live out here too. So it's, it, it does hurt my feelings. It's a little bit hurtful to me when you guys say we want to hear from people that live out there.
A majority. And we want to hear from more than the person that's.
That's okay, but I just.
No, that, that, don't get hurt feelings.
We spent a, a long time here having a conversation with you. You should not feel bad. We heard a lot of input from you and we would like to hear input from other folks that live there as well.
Present it. Did you have anything more or?
No, I'm, I'm in support of, yeah, going and finding out from the other residents there too.
And I'm, I'm in support of looking at options. Uh, so I think we have a consensus here that it's worth pursuing further and that we'll start with, uh, Pine Grove Committee, make this one of the first, uh, things that they have input on. And then if we can come up with something to forward to the planning commission, we'll come back to that.
So thank you, Steve, for clarifying that. So basically it's gonna, so this is different. It's gonna bounce to the small area plan committee and then bounce back to us and then we can decide if we want to send it to planning?
I think that would work. How about you, Dave? We're kind of.
Yeah, I would think, um, we would want to be mindful of where some of the data that the impact analysis offers might be valuable in that discussion. I think at this stage, if the small area plan advisory board is simply being asked to look at conceptual, you know, polygons on a map and, and, you know, give up, you know, general, general comments and feedback, then, then this is fine. Um, and then it can come back to the board. And if there's, if you want Armin to take that net, next step, submitting the application, preparing the impact analysis, starting the process for regional review, then that would be, you know, that would be another step where the board has another opportunity to, to, you know, say, go or, or, or stop.
Okay.
Thanks.
I think, I think we're going to wrap it up here. This has been an unusual discussion, but I think given previous history of rezonings and how some of the bumps that we've hit, I'm trying to avoid those. So I think it was worth having this discussion and I think the consensus is that there's something to move forward with, even if it's not a complete R three for the whole thing, or if there are other things to consider in it. Does that work for what you were looking for, Armin? Or, I mean, I know you.
I mean, it, it gives me, it gives me a, a place to go, uh, uh, towards. And again, part of this whole thing was this new rezoning. I mean, I, I, I filled out, I don't know if you guys are going to be changing your rezoning applications also because that wasn't kind of. that wasn't kind of meeting the exact words of the new zoning from November. So, um, but I think that's good. And I think this work session, uh, should, I mean, Jenna, Dave, do you guys want to try and set up this formal work session?
I think it's a little early for that right now.
Okay.
Yeah, we would, we would plan on putting it on an agenda for, um, the, the Pine Grove Mills Small Area Plan Advisory Board.
Okay.
After they elect officers.
Okay.
And, and you are free to talk to board members as long as it's not three or more in the room.
Right.
If you want to get more detailed feedback. So, so at this point, I'm gonna close this agenda item and move on to the next one. I think we've got about as far as, uh, we need to get for tonight, so. Thank you, everyone. Thanks to everyone for a lot of input.
Thank you.
We're forward to it. Uh, next item is Center Region Council of Governments Management of Center County Hazmat Team.
Thank you. So several years ago, um, COG staff, the Alpha Fire Company and the State College Firemen's Relief Association started having some discussions with Penn State University about the transfer of the hazmat team to management by the Council of Governments. Um, after quite a bit of discussion and several events does, um, designed to educate, um, elected officials in the public, uh, there is consensus on a plan to move forward. So provided with your agenda this evening, there are several agreements that would formalize this transfer of responsibility from Penn State University to the Center Region Council of Governments uh, for the management of the county hazmat team. There's a memorandum of agreement, uh, that's been drafted between, uh, the, uh, COG and Penn State. Uh, an agreement between COG and Center County and an agreement between COG, Alpha Fire Company and the State College Firemen's Relief Association. Public Safety Committee of the COG, um, heard, reviewed the draft agreements on May 12th and, uh, decided to forward the agreements to the member municipalities for their comment and ultimately to the Executive Committee of the COG for their approval. The agreements have been reviewed by municipal managers, the Center Region Fire Director, Steve Bear. Mr. Bear was going to be joining us this evening, but I don't see him in the group. I know we have Eric Norenberg, the COG Executive Director here. Uh, maybe to answer any questions that the board might have.
Okay, uh, the documents were in the agenda. So does anyone have any questions on those documents at this point? Patty?
You're muted. Please forget about that. Thank you. Where will the hazmat equipment go? They said, you know, they were gonna take it from Penn State and, and move it to us. So where will it be housed? That's, that's a good question. Who's taking it?
Eric, uh, may be better suited to answer that question about where that equipment will be stored.
And my, and I, my memory is that Penn State's gonna continue to house it for two years and then.
Was it two years or one year?
Well, that's.
I, I read the papers and I forgot. I mean, I read, I, it's been a lot of reading today and anyway, I forgot.
Yeah.
The, the agreement, um, obligates Penn State to fund that equipment and maintenance and replacement for two years. I don't know whether it says anything about where the equipment will be housed. It, it might, I'm just not recalling.
It did say that it had to be taken out of the facility at Penn State and that's why I think I thought after a year. So I think they said they'd agree to fund it, but then I thought I read somewhere that the equipment had to leave that facility.
You, you might be right, Patty, a, after a year. Yeah.
Eric's joined us now.
I, I don't remember the exact period of time, but there is a facility use agreement that's uh, in the final stages of being negotiated with, uh, Penn State for the continued storage of the equipment after July 1st. At, at the end of the period of time, that we are using that facility to continue housing that, it will be housed in the fire facilities, uh, Alpha Company.
Downtown?
Various facilities. I, I don't, I'd have to check with Steve to know exactly which, but one, one of the advantages is that, uh, we, we can house it in, in three different stations as opposed to ha, having one dedicated facility. And, uh, at the end of the timeframe, that the, for the next three year transition, we can better assess where each of the pieces of equipment best fits and enables it to be best available for response.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments?
So this, this was discussed, uh, briefly, although it's perhaps not the, uh, ideal place to discuss it. But, uh, in the, um, COG Environmental Committee and, um, one member, uh, pointed out, uh, that, um, essentially this is the duty of the county and the county should be paying for it. And now it seems we, as, you know, as part of the COG and whatever formula will come up, we are now taking on, um, things that effectively the county should be doing. I have concerns on that aspect.
Who's that?
Fortunately, I'm, I'm not the, I, I wish Steve was here. I, I was attending not to represent this particular issue, but to, to, uh, observe your meeting and, uh, I'll learn more about Ferguson Township and, and was not prepared to answer questions on this tonight. I apologize. But I, so I've been, uh, really interested in the discussion about development and some of the other things that were on the agenda. Uh, I know Steve had offered to be here. But I, I, I'd be happy to answer or have Steve get back to you and, and respond later. But this has been under discussion for the past, I think, you know, more than a couple of years. Every time the cycle comes up for a three-year renewal.
Mr. Reacher, I can, I can follow up on that with you as well. Question particularly about funding. There is provisions in the agreement with the county for Act 165 funding for the maintenance and replacement of the equipment. So the intent would be for the county to continue to fund those operational and capital equipment needs as well as to provide a minimum of $5,000 per year to the COG uh, and Alpha Fire Company for their continued operation of the hazmat team. So I think if, um, if Steve Bear were here, just, you know, gauging from prior conversations that I've had with him on this subject, um, I think it's his assessment that there's really nothing given in, in the three-year timeframe of this agreement that the Center Region stands to lose or is on addition, under additional obligation for in terms of cost and, and funding. Um, and in fact, there are several opportunities for us to benefit as a county as a result of turning the management of the hazmat team over, uh, to the COG. So without knowing the specifics about the numbers and how funding obligations may change in the long term, I can say that the, that the county will continue to fund through their state allocation as well as the up to minimum $5,000 a year for the, the continued operation by the COG of that, of that, um, that service.
Yeah, and if I, uh, were to follow up on that, I think, uh, well, this was a discussion between one of the members and I think at that point, uh, there were, uh, a couple of people from, from COG and it, it seemed like the, up until now, it seems Penn State has been paying for it and doing for it. I mean, doing things because most of the, uh, events happen at Penn State. So mitigation needs to be done. Basically some, uh, chemical spills in the lab or whatever else has been at Penn State too. So to the extent that I know, this is sort of a new, uh, you know, um, new thing that's happening. And, uh, it wasn't clear that the county, that, that the, uh, COG would not have any additional financial burdens it was taking on. So I would like clarification on that part.
I'll just chime in here. Um, the Public Safety Committee has actually discussed this multiple times. And so I'll just add some of the knowledge that I've gotten, um, in those discussions. So one is that responses are reimbursed, uh, by the state. So, um, I think maybe actually through, I'm, actually, I'm not going to speak to where it comes from, but, so incident responses are reimbursed. So if we got called to a incident out of the Center Region, there would be reimbursement for that as well as within the Center Region. My question does have to do with the capital investments after the three years. But because it is actually a county responsibility, my understanding is at the end of those three years, not that this would be an appropriate thing to do, but we theoretically could say it's not our responsibility, it's the county's responsibility. And I guess it puts us in a good negotiating position. We have a, the equipment, we have the capacity, we have the capability. The county has the responsibility, so we should work together to fund it in an appropriate way. And so I'm, I think with no guarantees, there's nothing in writing. I think at the end of the three years, that's, you'll see us negotiate or before the three years are up, negotiate, um, an agreement that's amenable to all of the parties. Um, and I don't think Steve Bear would have it any other way. Um, he's very conscious of, of responsibility and finances and whatnot.
Correct.
I thought I read in there, was, is there a contract with the county or to provide these services? I'm not finding it now. I thought I saw a reference to a contract.
The, um, you mean as far as the, the requirement for the county to provide hazmat services?
Yeah, and that this team would be covering county.
There is a document like that. There's a, there's a county COG document because, because it's the county's responsibility. They have to contract it to somebody or take responsibility for it, so.
Correct. There, there'll be four agreements that need to be executed by the end of June. One is between Penn State and the COG. One is between for, for the hazmat equipment. One is between Penn State and the COG for the facility use, uh, for the, the facility where the equipment will continue to be stored for a period of time. Another is between COG and Center County, which has already been approved by the, uh, the county and signed off on. And then finally between COG and the Alpha Fire Company and the State College Firemen's Relief Association. The only agreement that's in the final stages still of being detailed out is the one between Penn State and the COG. And, and that just recently, uh, has seen final tweaks this week.
And then I just wanted to ask about the hazmat team. Who staffs that? Who, who are the staff of that team?
Boy, everybody's testing my brain cells tonight. Um, I do believe that that will be staffed by fire personnel.
Okay.
Have an area of expertise in that area.
So, but some of the volunteer.
And, and I did see in one of the agreements, the Alpha Company has agreed to take on the members that are currently hazmat members.
Right.
Working through the Penn State contract, they will be working through Alpha. So there are people, I assume specialists that are on the hazmat team now that would become part of Alpha as a result of these agreements.
And they're paid?
That I don't know.
Okay. They're paid or volunteer staff?
Many would continue to be volunteers, but it, when they're responding on behalf of the hazmat unit, then they're covered under, uh, the insurance of Alpha, uh, through the hazmat agreement with the, uh, State College Firemen's, uh, Fund.
Yeah, so just to cap, uh, my comment would be that, uh, if, I, I would like to know what the financial implications are. What is the expected sort of payout? Because it does say in one of the documents, it says that COG will pay this, uh, sorry, county will pay this, county will pay this, county will pay this. In another one, it says COG will pay for the insurance and a bunch of other things. So it's just, uh, you know, what are we taking on and what are the expected expenses and, uh, how much is the county paying and what are we paying?
I, I can forward that as a comment. Is in concurrence that they'd be interested in knowing a little bit more about what the financial implications are of the execution of the agreements.
Anything else? This does not require an action tonight. This is just a chance to get information and request any other things like that that we need, so. Is there anything else?
I guess, Dave, if you're asking that, if you could just can find out if they're volunteer paid staff that are on that team.
Anything else? The, not, I'll move to the next agenda item. I guess I'll ask first, uh, do we want to take a break or are we getting close enough to the end? I see lots of nods for breaks, so let's take five.
Steve? Do you have any idea when we're going to go back to meeting at the, at the building?
I'll throw that one to Dave.
Beg your pardon?
I'm gonna throw that one to Dave.
What Steve and Laura and I talked about on Friday was kind of leaving it up to the board's discretion. I think there's no, you know, restrictions, given that we're in the green phase now. If we wanted to reconvene in person, I would be reluctant to do so in the same way that we've done in the past. Meaning I think we would need to put some additional protocol in place to make sure people are distant from one another, including the public that may wish to attend. Our public, our building is still technically closed off to the public for other applications and other uses. And will probably remain so through, you know, I would predict at least mid-June, if not longer, depending on the, you know, the status of everything. But we could accommodate that. We could put staff, you know, we could put a few more tables. You're not seeing what I'm looking at, but if you were here, I'd be putting them like over here somewhere. And then just some foldable tables for staff. So this way we could have at least one space in between each board member and each staff member so that everyone were properly distanced. So I don't want to, I mean, things have been working really well in a Zoom environment. I mean, that's my opinion, of course, but I think that's generally true. So I don't want to force you all to come and meet in person if there's no real immediate need to do so until you're comfortable in doing it. So Steve turned it to me and I'm going to turn it back to you all and say, it's really, it's really at your discretion when you want to, you know, resume meeting in our physical space here.
I would propose that we make that a discussion for the next meeting. I think we should go with one more Zoom meeting.
Okay.
Everybody really wants to get back together. And I think, I don't know how long the green phase is going to last before things are completely opened up. So we'll probably have to go, or not have to, but want to go to regular meetings before that time occurs. Maybe we could consider for the next meeting deciding whether we want to have the meeting after that be back in the building. And then I guess another option could be hybrid where anyone who wants to come in can. And if anyone has concerns, they could come in by Zoom. So, so why don't we set that for discussion next meeting then? I would like to go with one more Zoom meeting instead of making that decision tonight. Okay with that. Okay. Well, it looks like the board's all back, so we'll go ahead and resume the meeting now. And next item is comments on the draft 2020, 2021 Center, Transportation Authority budget.
Thank you. So really, this is an annual item on the board's agenda just to give you each an opportunity to provide any comments you may have on the draft CADA budget. It was voted, it was approved in draft form at the April 27th meeting of the cog board of directors. And a public comment period was initiated. So there's a link in the agenda that would take you to the relevant documents, the authority budget, their strategic plan. It is worth noting that the board has already approved its local match for the 2020, 2021 fiscal year for CADA. That was done late in 2019. Highlights of this proposed budget include a proposed 20 cent increase in the CADA bus fare. There was a public hearing conducted last week on that proposed fare increase, as well as several other service route changes that have been presented to the board in November of last year with the local match resolution. Board, this board doesn't have any approval authority over the CADA budget, but has traditionally been afforded an opportunity to provide comments. I did share with Luanne Oliver, executive director, that we'd be discussing it this evening. But she didn't see a need for, you know, to attend if there wasn't an interest in the board and having her come to a future meeting. So if there are any comments, I can forward them on to her for consideration when they make the adoption of the final document.
Okay, so again, this is not an action item, but if anybody has comments to forward to CADA or questions.
I'll have to read this in more detail. I skimmed through it. They had something at the top saying COVID-19 sort of changes everything. But then I didn't find much about whether they have projections or they're waiting. And I just want to know what the impact of COVID-19 is.
I also, I can follow up with them, but because I did listen in on that meeting. And I was just curious, someone had asked the question about why a 20 cent increase. It was sort of an odd amount. And I can follow up and ask, particularly if someone's paying cash. You know, the 20 cent increase is a weird thing as opposed to a quarter, but I can follow up and ask them that myself.
I was wondering, my question would be why the apartment purchase rate increased so little? And I know they, they explained a lot when they had an orientation for the new board members about how those numbers drive up the available federal and state assistance. But it's just such a small increase. It's only two cents. So it's only a dollar seven per trip now. So I was wondering why such a small increase. You know, and I get, you know, it's kind of a circular argument. You know, we have the discussion with them. But you know, the roots that are diminished then seem to be in the outline areas, campus. And the apartments have, of course, they have higher demand. So they're, you know, the services are increasing and they're only going to keep increasing with the cottages and, you know, the other outline developments. But, you know, if those people were to drive in town, they'd pay for parking, which would help the borough budget. Or they'd pay for, you know, parking on campus. So not that we want everybody in cars, but there is a, there is money lost in that exchange somewhere else. So, you know, I just, it was disappointing to see the Pine Grove Mills routes and other ones diminished and our fares increased. And that apartment rate increased so little.
Yes, I agree with that completely. They also typically, those apartments use that as like a point of why you should stay at their apartment. We have free bus passes for everybody. So they're actually, you know, benefiting from that. And yeah, I would want to encourage that behavior, but I want to encourage it in people that pay individual fares as well. So, you know, why, why that change that way? I'd love to have an answer to that as well.
Okay, so Dave, you got those down then to?
Yes.
So then we move to next agenda item, which I have to pull up here. Is the comments on the Center County Metropolitan Planning Organization draft 2021 to 2024. Station Improvement Program and Air Quality Conformity Report.
Thank you. So provided with the agenda is a link to some of the relevant documents for your consideration and comment this evening. The Center County Transportation Improvement Program, or the TIP, as you'll often hear it referred to, as well as the Air Quality Conformity Report, which is prepared in conjunction with the TIP to ensure that the transportation improvement projects that are identified in the document cause the county to increase beyond its budget for emissions, greenhouse gas emissions within the proposed scope of the TIP. So Ms. Strickland is the board's representative on the Metropolitan Planning Organization's Coordinating Committee. Ron Cyber Township Engineers, the representative on the Technical Committee for the MPO. So any comments that the board has on the draft tip this evening can be provided through your representatives on those committees prior to the official consideration and adoption of the 2021 to 2024 tip. Really, there's only one project on the tip that is located in Ferguson Township. And that is the Shingle Town Road, PA Route 26 intersection signalization project that the board is familiar with. It is fully funded within the scope of this year's, or the four, the five-year transportation improvement program. So the board can expect that if the tip is approved in its current draft form, that that project will continue, will be fully funded and will be able to be completed. The township engineer has offered that he has no concerns or comments to add to the discussion this evening. You know, he's not here tonight to make those comments himself. Dave Modricker and I had a chance to chat with him about that. And I'll leave it at that. If there's any comments, we can forward them on.
Are there any comments or questions? Okay, it looks like Laura has one.
I have a question. So we're going to try to put a signal in at the blinking light intersection in Pine Grove Mills. And we're talking about funding that as the individual municipality. Is there any way we can ask them to put it on some plan that the region would consider contributing it to it, like jump, jump it forward? Is there any way we can ask about that?
So I'll give my thoughts and then Dave, if you have anything to add, be appreciated. But I think what the board has decided relative to that signal is to fund the signal warrant study, which would then be presented to PennDOT for their concurrence that a signal is justified at that location. There's been no commitment made by the township as of yet as to who is going to fund the construction and permitting of that traffic signal. The township could do it out of the general fund or the transportation improvement fund. So local dollars could be spent entirely to fund that improvement. Alternatively, it could go through the state allocation and funding process, which would initiate in the long-range transportation plan, which is the 20-year vision document for the county for transportation funding projects. So it would make its way, depending on how it's prioritized countywide on the LRTP, it would then make its way into the Transportation Improvement Program, the TIP, for design permitting and construction. Dave, is that?
Yeah, I'll just add that in years past, and maybe the process has changed recently. But the first four years of the, well, the four-year tip is the first four years of the LRTP, the Long Range Transportation Plan. And at times when those plans are being updated, the townships ask to provide a list of candidate projects. Then those candidate projects get ranked by the tech committee and then come in front of the MPO. Those projects rank, sometimes they priority than others. What happened recently with the Shingle Town intersection, it was a different color of money, so to speak. They got advanced through a safety project initiative. And so that's how that one got pushed up to the top quicker than other projects of interest.
So is there any way that we can get this project one closer to being in that four-year window? Can we submit it on a list to be considered?
I think you do when, when the project, when projects are being solicited by municipalities to update the long-range transportation plan. And then as it moves through that process, it can work its way up to the four-year plan. And it's been some time since I've looked at it, since Ron's sitting on the tech committee now. But I'm not sure where in the LRTP that blinking light in Pine Grove resides. But as Dave mentioned, we committed to at least locally funding the study for it to try to get something moving on it.
Thanks.
You know, in reality, projects, you know, are maybe intended to advance through the long-range transportation plan coordinating with the years that they're dated, meaning at the end of the time horizon, you know, the 20 years out. As the LRTPs evolve and advance through the years, eventually those projects at the tail end of the transportation plan get elevated to the tip. But I think in reality, what's happened is some of those projects have moved very quickly to the top priority, depending on how the region evaluates them, whereas others have kind of lingered in the tail end of the tip. Think bypass, the Pine Grove bypass, I think that hung out in the back end of the tip for quite a few years. And in fact, the signal redesign, or the intersection redesign for Pine Grove Mills used to be on the long-range transportation plan, but I believed, I believe it was removed.
Well, yeah, my, I guess, I didn't think it was removed. And I think that this project that we're talking about taking on is tied in with that. And so, I mean, I don't know what the process would be to get a new project that is the slimmed-down version, that is just the intersection without the redesign, if we can get that on there. If we, so maybe if we could all just, Lisa, if you could be scanning the horizon there on when, when we can do that, if we can do that.
It's going to be on the agenda for next month's meeting, discussing the long-range plan. So we could see if any element of that project is still on there. And then probably discuss, maybe submitting a request if that's what we'd want to, want to do. And talk to Ron, because, you know, the technical committee would evaluate all those suggestions.
I think that would be great, because if we do intend to do this design and hopefully can protect it, it's going to be different than the project if they do have it on the books that they have there. So I think if we have any desire to even possibly get any additional funding for this, it's got to be on that list.
And I think it, I'm sorry, Laura.
No, it's okay.
I think it may also, as I reflect on this, depend on the makeup of the elected officials too, because, you know, that signal's been talked about off and on 20 years that I've been here, but really has not progressed to the point of making it too far in the top of that long-range transportation plan. So I think if, if the board's, you know, really interested in it, then maybe you make that your top priority and then see how it gets ranked. Even if it's your top priority, some, it may not necessarily rank with the county one of the county's top priorities. But all we could do is keep, keep trying, like you said. And, you know, Lisa can petition and Ron and we'll staff will just keep our ears open whenever we can get candidate projects in there to make sure we suggest this one.
Thank you so much.
And I think it might stand a chance of moving up. Because part of the reason that the whole project hasn't moved up is that there were a lot of problems with the intersection realignment, which has been part of that. By now, that may make something that is a lot more feasible. Also, may qualify for, you know, safety improvement money or something like that. So sometimes those move very quickly.
Thank you all.
Anything else on the? Seeing none, we move on to the committee reports.
So, one thing, Chair. So we pulled out one item from the consent agenda. Should we discuss that now or?
Yes, we did pull one out. Thank you. That would be the let's see, what was that that we pulled out?
The procurement policy amendment that was a board member request.
That was sent just request?
Yes.
Okay, so, so what we'll do here is, the question for tonight is, do we put it on the agenda for the next meeting? The, the question for tonight is do we put it on the agenda for the next meeting? So if you could describe what it is that you would like to. Ask and then we'll have a vote on whether to add it to the agenda.
Sure, so the, the objective there i- here is essentially. Um, to make sure that the projects that we, you know, contract out. Do not go out and employ people at below fifteen dollars an hour. And so I had some conversations with Dave, the two Daves. And it turns out that my initial plan was that, you know, the. Whatever projects that are being contracted out on behalf of the township. We should play, pay a minimum fifteen dollars an hour. Now, just as I found out, above a certain level, I think it's about twenty five thousand dollars or so. The state has a law which requires paying some prevailing wages or some things which comes out to thirty seven dollars an hour. And those contracts are taken care of. Now for the, so there is this gap that was, that is there where. The minimum is really the seven fifty or seven twenty five, whatever is the. Is the federal minimum. It, through the discussions, it came out that. Perhaps if we do it below ten thousand dollar projects, it'll be. Some additional paperwork that people have to say that, you know, show that they're paying more than fifteen dollars an hour and there are. Few takers for those projects that possibly the cost is a little too much for smaller projects. So what is? Is up for discussion is whether the board wants to discuss something in those lines, I'm not wedded to this particular solution. But the, the proposal as of now is that anyone between ten thousand and twenty five thousand dollars. When they imply people, they have to pay fifteen dollars an hour or more. And that can be indexed later for something, you know, that can grow up or. So the, the, the design is up to us, whatever the board as a whole wants to do. But this is sort of the basic idea that I wanted to bring forward.
I guess, is there any discussion, not necessarily on the, how the idea would be implemented, that's really what we're, our question is, do we even want to discuss that? Do we want to put that on the agenda, so?
And my question on the item was in the memo. The recommended motion said that the Board of Supervisors would be directing staff to prepare an amendment. So is this directing staff to prepare the amendment or just adding it for discussion?
Tonight, we're just putting on discussion. But the action at the next meeting could be to do that if we decided to do so.
Okay, so no staff time would be dedicated to this prior to the discussion?
Correct, the, the board policy on board member request to add items to the agenda. Directs board members to summer or to, to draft a proposed action as part of that request. And so Mr. Mitra indicated he and I worked on some of the language that's in the consent agenda tonight, but. That proposed motion is what the board would be asked to consider at the upcoming meeting. Provided you agreed to move it from consent to the regular meeting agenda for discussion. Bureaucracy.
Thanks, I just wanted to clarify that, that you were not being directed to, to draft that at this point.
So if there's. Since we pulled it off the consent agenda, we'd need a separate motion to add this item to next.
Hi Laura, move that we add this item to our next meeting agenda.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All in favor? Aye?
Aye. Aye.
Motion carries. And now we move to the staff and committee reports versus the executive committee. We did meet on the. I'm not sure the date, it was the day after our last meeting. The executive committee did. Authorize the extension of the executive committee making decisions without a general forum meeting. Through the next executive committee, which will be June sixteenth, so. We will either extend it again on the sixteenth or have a general forum meeting on the twenty second. I'm not sure Eric was trying to find a larger venue than the general forum. Meeting room, which is pretty small for that large of a group to maintain any distancing. The problem is that most places that have larger meeting rooms don't want them to be used right now. So we haven't, haven't really determined how to do that. There's a lot of question about having a Zoom meeting. With thirty two people voting. Which could be, be a large Zoom meeting, but a possibility. I think as everybody gets more comfortable with Zoom meetings, that may be a way to go. If we can't find a venue. So I may ask at our next meeting, which comes before the next executive committee meeting. What your opinions are as far as how we should approach that? Because I know that would be a question for us. The other action item we had was the. Park loan. Agreement. Which the executive committee approved, there's a little bit of contention about it because Danelle. Made the motion and Half Moon should not be voted, or doesn't need to vote on that, shouldn't be voting on it. But according to Terry Williams, who knows more about Robert's rules than I do, that doesn't create a problem. So, I'm not, so, but essentially. Although there was a bit of a, you know, question about the procedure, the actual effect of it was. Cog will save a little bit of money by redoing the loan. It was not a major change and. It essentially moves the lower interest rate we have now out a little longer before we have to start. Taking the full draw and pay a higher interest rate. So I think that it's. You know, a very small effect, but the effect is positive, so. Other than that, that was really about the only thing, we did discuss the hazmat agreement, which we're talking about tonight. But not near as much detail as we had tonight, so. That was about it for that, then we have the Transportation and Land Use Committee.
Yeah, thank you. But Steve, I actually have a question or two about executive committee. Thank you, sorry. I guess, well, I'm gonna ask first a question that might be related to executive committee, but is definitely something I think you might. We be aware of, like where the issue is. So we talked about cog committees and doing, doing something about the cog committees. We were gonna give some input and I guess other municipalities were, where is that in the?
We, we actually ended up, the, I think all of the committees are back active on Zoom now, Zoom is working.
Oh, I'm sorry, I, sorry, that was a very unclear question.
You mean the discussion of. A redoing, that's sort of. Because the, the issue became more complicated. You know, for things such as we discussed, I think that's gonna wait and be tied into a larger issue of. Re, refocusing, you know, getting input from the other, from the committees before we do any further discussion. I don't think the executive committee will be taking any action on that.
And, and so, I'm so happy to hear that, it just totally made my night, that's great.
Thank you, maybe I would strongly urge the committee to defer it until we're having general forum meetings again.
Thank you, not because I don't trust executive.
The whole executive committee would agree with that, but this is, has, it's too big an issue to be handled that way.
Yeah.
That will be. That will be lighter.
Great, great, thank you so much, and then the other thing is, so. This is, I'm still kind of figuring out what happened with executive committee motion and then the park authority board. Action and Terry Williams' ruling or opinion, so I'm still trying to figure that out and this is what I think. I understand is that it wasn't that, it wasn't a problem that Half Moon made a motion. On a park thing, that like apparently had, that became irrelevant. Because in Terry Williams' finding, in fact. That thing never needed to come before executive committee and it could go straight to the park authority. And that's why executive never remet to have a revote.
I think it was both, I think. I, I didn't look at it further, but I think that. You know, the fact that Half Moon made the motion, put it on the upper vote was not a problem. But in any case, the. The matter was really advisory and the, the reason for having it on a. A general forum agenda anyway, was so the general forum would be aware of it. And I, I believe that it really didn't matter how we voted, it was still the authorities' call.
Right, that's what I understand the end verdict to be. So I guess I'll have two comments about that. The fact that we're all functioning in this system and we don't know that already, I feel like is problematic in an organization as mature as ours. The other thing is that this is a good example of when I say that the elected officials don't have. Pervview over things that the authority has purview over, that I think the elected officials that have purview over. And I believe that, I don't know that this is true, but I believe that our little new system that we evolved. Where we confirm or, I don't know what it's called. Where we say, yes, we think the authority should totally sign that lease. That also is advisory and if we said no, or if we didn't vote at all, it would make no real difference to the system. So we really don't have any legitimate power over lease signing capacity. With anything having to do with park authority, still. Because it's just advisory, right?
If you're right about that.
Okay.
I, I can't say for certain, but I, I believe that that's true.
Thank you, thank you for allowing me this time to unravel things.
Okay. Anything else on executive? Then I'll turn it over to Lisa.
Sure, thank you. We also discussed meeting in person via or via Zoom. And several members expressed that they would want to continue meeting via Zoom, so just to. You know, reference back to the general forum, I think you would still have people who don't want to come. To be in the room, so, you know, maybe a, a poll could be taken prior to. Determining what size room is actually necessary, so. Just a thought there, but that was interesting, prob, two or three did express that and probably others would be willing to. Still re-meet remotely. We got an update on the bicycle friendly community renewal application. We are currently a bronze community, we have that designation and it lasts for four years, so that needs to be renewed at this point. And Trish Meeks went through all the different criteria for that and. The center region does really well and meeting a lot of those and she was actually hopeful we might be silver, so. So that would be really neat and one thing. That came up in that discussion was one of the. Favorite projects that gets pointed to is the Warner Boulevard reconfiguration and. The collaboration with the Penn Dot Connects program where they take into account. Local, local needs for their road reconstruction projects, so over there you got some enhanced bike paths and pedestrian areas and. Crossings and so that was mentioned just as an attribute for our designation, so I did take that opportunity to ask about. Our Shingle Town Road Improvement and if we could or had. Put some items into that Penn Dot Connect system so that any pedestrian or bike needs could be addressed at that time. So, yes, they have talked about that and just for a little bit of information, they said. There will be bike and pedestrian safety improvements, things to accommodate bikers and walkers. The road will be widened, the bridge will be wider than it is now, but there is no discussion of any separate lanes, there just isn't the width. For that because of environmental reasons, land ownership rights of way, different things, so. So there won't be separate paths for that, but. Part of the consideration for having a signalized intersection were those things as opposed to having a roundabout there, which would have been harder for pedestrians. And as we know, there are actual pedestrian uses going on down there, believe it or not, across that bridge, people run and. Walk and a lot of bike activity there, so I was really happy to hear that all those things are being taken into consideration. We also had an update on the land consumption study, which you heard a little bit about earlier. It's a really interesting study talking about residential land. Consumption in, within the regional growth boundary. You know, a lot of data's been collected and is being analyzed and like I said earlier, you know, it's, it is all interesting data, but. It's not entirely meaningful as a whole, you really have to break it out and Mark. Vocal agreed and said, you know, he will take some time in the future to. Kind of dig into that a little bit more, this was just an update that we had today. You know, there is an agreement that we need to increase density developed within the regional growth boundary, so there, there's no disagreement there. It's just how, you know, to purposefully and, you know, effectively do that and, and. So I was happy that they appreciated that it is kind of, you know, it's different areas when you're talking about something that's bordering farmland versus. Regional growth boundary land downtown, so that you just have to address it differently. Harris Township pointed out some of that too, so that was. That was echoed from there. And, yeah, and then I already mentioned that CCMPO will meet on six twenty three and we'll be discussing the long range tip then, so. That's it.
All right, any questions for Lisa? If not, we'll move on to the manager's report, or no, Spring Creek Waters. We have. Was there a meeting or do we just have to?
Yes, so there was a meeting and I did go in there, sorry, I was muted and I'm trying to bring up the. The document. So, yeah, I think most of the, most of the meeting was spent sort of on an educational topic. So Andrew Warner from Penn State's Water Center of Excellence came and just talked in general about. Water sheds and creeks in the area and what we can do or something, so most of it was very general information. I didn't get very much new or something that we should be doing as much as it was just giving us some information about what's around us. There will be a viewing of the one water report. That was done on our, on a June eighteenth special meeting. So this is a sort of a promotional video, which is talking about the entire water area. And then we discussed a little bit, but didn't decide whether we weren't clear about whether we should be. Going in and asking for the municipalities for vote and. Money and so on and so forth, so that will still be discussed. There is a photo contest that was announced, which is about a photo of any watershed in the area that people can submit. Our, the person who. Would take on the minutes, I guess the only person who worked part time and was paid. Salary by the commission, Caitlin Teddy resigned and. um, salary by the commission, Caitlin Teddy, um, resigned and moved somewhere. So there's a new person, um, Gabrielle, um, I forget the last name. Uh, she has started, um, and she, she seems very interested in, um, in, in, in water and other environmental issues. Um, so, um, that was a short meeting. Um, we just, uh, you know, then went over the, the, the balance sheet, um, which, uh, is going as expected. So, um, not much, um, other than that.
Thank you. Uh, then we'll move to manager's report.
Thank you. My report's in your packet. Um, given the hour, I'm going to let most of it just stand as written unless there are any questions. There's two things that I do want to just briefly touch on. One is with the report, there's the schedule that the finance director provided for the capital improvement program budget preparation process. Um, so typically what, uh, staff will do is, you know, once Eric and I get a chance to review the requests from each department, draft to the board, we'll schedule a couple of work sessions, uh, where we'll meet to, to review the document in, in pretty great detail. But, and, and I'll, I'll send out a, a doodle poll for you all to complete in the coming week. Um, but prior to that, it's customary for the board to schedule a road tour, uh, with the Public Works Director and the Manager, the Finance Director, to look at proposed road projects that are within the scope of the CIP. Given the pandemic and the additional restrictions on social gatherings, um, we thought, staff thought that it may not be advisable to have the road tour in its traditional, um, you know, as we've traditionally done in prior years and maybe do something that's a little more self-guided. So what I'd like to propose and get your feedback on tonight is if we were to provide the board with the, um, what's going to be requested in the capital improvement program budget for road projects and a map for you all to follow. If it would be, you know, um, something, if it would be better for us to just kind of go out uh, on our own, look at the projects, look at the areas of interest, and then you can bring your comments back, um, uh, to staff and to the, to the board at large during this CIP work sessions. It's not quite the, you know, ideal way to have these. I think we've had good discussions at these road tours in, in past years, but given the circumstances, it may be the best way that we could do it and still ensure, um, you know, social distancing and, and appropriate protocol. Everybody okay with that?
Yeah, I, I think that would work. Uh, if Dave, uh, could, and Ron could maybe identify places where you think we'd be stopping and having discussion. Maybe give us a little, cause, uh, I mean, there, there are usually three or four places that you really want to point out. And so if you could include that along with the map, where those places would be, then make it easy for people to go take a look at them. And, you know, you could describe what the questions are that you might want, need an answer to.
Sure, I think we can do that. And I think we can, um, you know, talk about the, the, right? So even amongst ourselves, when we review it, the staff requests, um, you know, we can be prepared to present the board some options in areas that we may be looking for some specific direction on, as you suggested. So we can certainly do all those things. Um, all right, so that, I appreciate your flexibility there. The details of that will be forthcoming as well. And then lastly, there was, uh, some questions recently that were, uh, floating around about, uh, the township's contribution to Central Pennsylvania Fourth Fest. Um, at the time, uh, the traditional event was canceled this year for COVID nineteen reasons. Um, but as there's been some discussion since then, um, I think maybe some of the board members are aware, if not all, that they're, that they are planning a display this year, but the details specifically as to where are still not at least publicly available. I can say that there is a location in Ferguson Township that's been identified. It's on private property. Um, Chief Albright and I have been working with the Executive Director at Fourth Fest, Frank Savino, um, as well as Center Region Fire Director, Steve Bear, to make sure that all the appropriate permissions are secured and that the fire company has the, uh, the assurance that they need that it's going to be a safe display and that, um, you know, any potential damage to neighboring residences can be mitigated. Um, so there is still the matter of the contribution that was made by the board. And given that it was made, the twenty-five hundred dollar, uh, contribution, given that it was made for a specific purpose, I didn't feel comfortable as manager just saying to let it go this year. I wanted to bring this matter back to you all and get your direction on how you want me to proceed. Do you want me to request the money back this year? What they have offered, they being Fourth Fest, is for us to roll that donation into next year, meaning the benefits that we would have received this year for our participation, which is typically, um, a set number of VIP viewing passes and, and, um, permits, uh, or parking permits for the event would then just be given to the township next year. Typically divided amongst staff and elected officials, um, based on a, a drawing or a raffle, uh, for those that are interested. So that's what we've historically done with those. So, you know, again, I, I, I think, um, you know, there is going to be an event this year. It's going to be pared down compared to what was originally planned. Uh, they are trying to keep the exact locations, um, a little secretive, at least as, to the degree that they're able to, so that people aren't encouraged to, you know, kind of come into the center region area from outlying areas and thereby increasing the public safety and health risk. Um, but I can tell you that there is a location in Ferguson Township. There are also several other locations around the region where a small display will be, uh, is currently being planned for. So they are planning on doing something, but I don't know if you had any thoughts on whether I should be requesting that be refunded or just allow it to stand as contributed.
Lisa, Laura.
Thanks. Um, I'm fine with continuing to support this, um, you know, this program that they're, they're being adaptive and I think that's good. Um, definitely, I'm, I'm very concerned about the, the fire hazard. Um, it's a, like a little bit last minute and it's a, like a different site. And I know Steve Bear is looking at that. Um, but I just feel like I really want to voice my concern about the safety of kind of the impromptu fireworks. And if it's proximal to forest land, just really being concerned about that. Um, and then the other thing is also a safety concern about this sort of like where we don't want people to come in and see them, but they're going to come in and we're not going to tell where the places are, but we're gonna, you're gonna see the fireworks. It sort of seems a little bit disorganized. And are they going to just use like the roads for people? Like you're just driving and like, oh, there's fireworks, everybody stop. I mean, that's kind of like what happens now and it's even like super organized. So, um, just feel like I want to voice those concerns and see if anybody has any input.
Well, I, I think, yeah, would be worthwhile forwarding those concerns. Just, you know, at least have them think about it. As far as the contribution, I think since we've already sent it and they're going to be asking us for one for next year. And I, I would go with just letting it ride for now and then figure out by your time what we're doing for next year.
Yeah, I guess. Go ahead.
Present you, go ahead.
All right. So I was saying that, um, so, so they, but they, they are offering that they, they just roll it over to next year and, um, it would be fine with me. And then we can add money if we want to or just leave it at that for next year.
Right, I think what they've committed to do is honor the, um, the package that, uh, sponsorship that they've provided this year in 2021. I think it remains to be clear, uh, remains to be seen whether they'll come back and ask for an additional appropriation next year, but the board could consider that individually if choose to come back in 2021.
Lisa.
I would agree with just rolling it over until next year. Um, but I'm, and I love fireworks. So I was excited that they were doing something like this and try, you know, just trying and thinking creatively, but I am also a little bit worried. But I'm, I'm going to feel secure in that it would not be approved by, um, every, the, you know, Chief Albright and Steve Bear if it's not, uh, properly handled, so.
And I should add too, that they, I mean, it's, it's not that they're going to be entirely secretive about this. They are going to take an advertisement out in the Center Daily Times and they're going to promote, you know, where, where this, these displays will be held. But I think it is a true statement to say that, um, because they, they're, they're not going to be providing gathering spaces like they do for normal Fourth Fest where, you know, folks can congregate on the lawn. Uh, where, you know, outside Beaver Stadium, Spike Stadium. So it is going to be kind of incumbent on the, those that are watching the fireworks to find their own locations for them, which I think is part of the reason for why they're having these in several different locations throughout the region so that people don't have to all congregate in one space. They might be able to be more visible from, um, private residences and things like that.
But I just, I'm confused because when I think of the Ferguson Township location, yet to be revealed, there's no parking lots there. So, once they reveal that location, what's a potential viewer to do? Like, I just, I'm not sure. Like, you just think, oh, can I see it from my house? If not, I'm going to not go to the parking lot since there isn't one. I'm going to just drive there. I just, I'm not, I'm not sure. Does the chief have any idea about that with the road situation, how that will work?
Some of the, once again, the undisclosed location, there are buildings, commercial areas that aren't right there, but close by that can afford some parking. And I, and I think that's a little bit of the plan, but I think it's also, and not being secretive, but if you do announce that this Great Bay, this is going to be the location that will draw a lot of people in town. And I think this is kind of more of a, a display for people already in the community.
And so then when they, like, people flock to those few commercial locations and parking lots, there's not going to be the Fourth Fest volunteers that you typically have, like helping with parking and that kind of stuff. It's just a little bit more free for all there.
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Okay, that was all I had unless there's other questions. Thank you.
Okay, so go to the Public Works Director's report.
Thanks, Steve. Uh, the report is in the packet. Dave touched on item one. Item two, Public Works Road Crew Activities. Weak brush collection, leaf collection, other related activities as listed. Public Works Building Under Construction. Work this week and the next few weeks is continued site work, footers, structures. Um, the new fuel tanks have been installed. Doing some work related to the Fuel Island and piping, forming and pouring concrete. Foundation type work. Sewer Authority installed the sewer lateral. Uh, it appears West Penn will not be able to provide underground service. So they're going to need to set a pole on our road. Go over research drive and then go underground. And if we account for the COVID nineteen work suspension, the project is on schedule and within budget. The next, uh, Stormwater Advisory Committee meeting is scheduled via Zoom on Wednesday, June seventeenth at noon. Uh, we also have a public education and outreach event scheduled for June twenty-fourth at five thirty. There'll be another meeting of the Stormwater Advisory Committee yet to be announced in July. Uh, other meetings and outreach, um, have not yet been scheduled. And I do encourage, uh, board members to attend, uh, all of the meetings that they can, including the two that we have dates for, just to help gain insight into the study that's been going on for two years now that you, you know, may or may not be as close to as it, um, if you weren't with it from the beginning. Uh, so that's just something. Encouraging you to attend those meetings if possible via Zoom. I included a number of projects in here that I haven't reported on in the past. A number of them are traffic signal related. I'm not going to go through all of those, given the time, but I can answer any questions. We have started some work on some of our capital projects. Did some tree planting last week. Um, of note, the very last two items, Grove Mills Mobility Study and the Pine Grove Road and Water Street, um, Nixon Road Signal Warranty Study. Both of those are delayed due to the current, um, coronavirus pandemic because it's affected traffic volumes and both the studies are very traffic volume dependent. Um, that's the end of my report.
Thank you. Any questions for Dave? Laura.
Two questions. Sorry, the meeting is long and I have all these questions tonight. Um, the Sandy Drive, can you interpret that for me? Is there a signal going in there now? Is that, is that what that? There's a signal that's definitely going in there. And then they're going to check it afterward to make sure it was for sure needed. That.
I think what we're looking for is clarity from Penn Dot as to whether or not a, another study has to be done after the signal is installed to corroborate projections of the trip generation based on our last study. So yeah, another study. And hopefully the study says, yes, look, it is warranted. Because if it doesn't, potentially they can say, well, you need to bag the signal. It's not warranted anymore.
So after you put it in, you could theoretically have to remove it?
Yeah, think about the, I was in across in the Nittany Mall and then as the business went out of business and there wasn't traffic and it wasn't warranted, they bagged it and I think eventually maybe took it down.
Okay.
I don't know that everybody necessarily does these studies, but it sounds like in this case Penn Dot is telling us that that's what they're going to be expecting of us.
Okay. Thanks. Um, and then the other thing was, I just didn't know if I needed to clarify, Dave, that the question I asked about the blinking light intersection and the mobility study of Pine Grove Mills, it wasn't like, are we starting that right now? I'm totally on board with waiting until we get some reasonable normalcy kind of level of traffic. And so what my question is, is if, if Penn State has resident education, let's say it's seventy percent, let's just take that as a percent, and SCASI is in session, will the consultants be ready to go with traffic counts? And can they complete them in say like a month's time?
Like, I think the answer to that is yes. Probably, probably the bigger question is, are we sure we want to ask them to?
Okay. Do you have a handle on what kind of percentage of normal we need to be to ask them to? I'm thinking like seven.
No, I, I, I think that's a discussion that, you know, I'd want to have with the township engineer, get some feedback for you. You know, the difficulties that we had meeting the warrant study for Science Park in Sandy. Now just imagine trying to do that somewhere where you've got seventy percent of the volumes.
Yeah, it makes me nervous, but it also is like, what if that's not going to change for a long time? I don't know.
Right. And I, I, I think the risk is you do it and you spend the money and it's not warranted. And then six months later, volumes are up, you do it and it meets the warrants. It's just.
Money.
You take, yeah, you take, that's the risk you take, right?
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? And we'll go to the planning, or Lisa.
Sir, I just wanted to ask really quick, do those, um, contracts expire at any time? If there isn't a, um, per, a notice to proceed given? And that's regarding the, um, Pine Grove Mills blinking light?
Yeah, some of, typically. Yeah, some of, typically they'll have a schedule that you anticipate getting the work done with professional service contracts, if it's agreeable to both parties. And there's no additional expense, usually they're pretty easy to extend. So unlike a construction contract where there's a lot more layer overhead or cost associated. So as, as long as, as long as the consultant, you know, has the ability to work it into their schedule, they're usually very willing to do that.
And in this case, it's McCormick Taylor. We have a relationship with them. And, you know, that's pretty longstanding. So I would think they would honor that, that contract provided it doesn't go, you know, well into next year or well beyond the horizon that we're expecting it to.
Right. Okay. Thank you so much.
Sure.
Okay. So let's go to the planning and zoning director's report.
So really the big thing with plans zoning is that we are going to attempt to have our zoning hearing board meeting in June. Working with Jeff Stover on his recommendations for what he would like to have done prior to the actual meeting itself. It'll probably require a lot of upfront work by the applicants and but I don't think it's too difficult to accomplish with enough time to prep. The main things that we're working on right now, drafts and edits have been submitted back to design administrator for the chicken and duck ordinance and I am working on the affordable housing ordinance this week. Just finished up the tree preservation ordinance, sent that off to Lance tonight. And those are the main things for us.
Okay. Any questions for Jenna? Laura.
Sorry, maybe I should know this. I've lost track during the pandemic. The variance request, the, for setbacks to change on the lot on Meckley. Did that happen, that zoning hearing board hearing?
I believe that one was tabled.
Yeah. Okay.
It's still hanging out there.
I thought it was still hanging out there.
Yeah.
Okay. Thanks.
Anything else? Okay. Any communications to the board? Lisa?
You're muted. Found it. Okay. I just wanted to mention, I got comments about the procurement item, so I can bring that up in discussion next time.
Okay.
I had a question about the Scott Road pump station and whether it was going to serve Orchard View and the sheets and Dave Prabalka helped me answer it.
Okay. Anything else? Okay. Then we have a count, one calendar item, Ferguson Township Elementary School Teachers Parade, June fourth at one P M. Sounds like fun. And seems to be it for tonight. So does anyone care to make a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
We're adjourned. See you later.
Good night.
Bye.